Now it just went back on, okay. Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
There's a sign up list, actually.
Oh, thank you.
There is, all gone.
I just got it, thank you very much, you're right, I had it here. James Gibb, please. Ron Grossman, go ahead and come down. Walter Bigelow. Dan, I'm not sure what his name is, I'm not sure what the last name is, I apologize.
You all can come down and sit if you want.
Yeah, if you come down to the table right here, there's mics in seats.
My name is James Gibb, I live at 2554 Carrollton Road, 21 years now. I'm here because I want to inform the council of what's going on in our community. You're probably all aware that the Key School plans to build an athletic sports complex in the midst of our community. You've probably seen pieces in the newspaper over the last couple of days. I'm not here to talk about Key School, that's a much longer conversation. I am here to talk about the Office of Planning and Zoning. Last year, they informed Key School that our road is too narrow for what they plan to do. It's 20 feet wide, and it curves. It was designed that way in 1926. Now, the Office of Planning and Zoning is telling us that the options are, well, the road can be resurfaced, I'm not sure how that widens it, but they're going to, you know, resurface the road, or create another ingress into the community from Eaglewood Court in the Annapolis Roads Apartments, which creates an at-grade intersection near a curve in the road. I don't see how that helps either, and it doesn't keep people off Carrollton for these big sporting events. And then finally, they suggest, well, we can put a sidewalk in that leads to the property, and from there, the walkway would go onto the Key School property, and now we'd get pedestrians off the road. Again, that doesn't solve the vehicular traffic problem, and because it won't be a public dedication, they can rescind our access to that walkway at any time. So I wanted you to be aware of it, I want the county executive to be aware of it, this is a significant problem that poses a hazard to the people of our community. Office of Planning and Zoning, their first responsibility has to be to the safety of the residents of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grossman?
Morning, gentlemen. My name's Ron Grossman, I'm the owner of a company called SBJ Consultants. We deal with substance abuse and mental health issues, and we're here in Anarundel County as well as several other counties. I want to address you real briefly on the heroin epidemic that we have here in the county and the state of Maryland. I've supplied you with a proposal for a new and innovative service to be brought to not just this county, but eventually all Maryland, that would take all of the services that are outlined under the Affordable Care Act, the Obamacare Act, put them on mobile transport units and take them virtually to every corner of Anarundel County in the state of Maryland, rather than have you or continue to subsidize treatment right now through antiquated programs such as the Health Department, that put people on a bus for six hours, give them their medication, and then drop them back off without any additional services. We think that this is an issue that needs to be addressed by the county, and we're hoping that you'll take a few minutes, maybe more than a few minutes, and take a look at the proposal we put in front of you, which would absolutely add zero to the county budget, it wouldn't use any additional money whatsoever, it would fund itself, and it would actually give the county an additional revenue of up to $200,000 a year that you could use for other programs, all while treating the heroin program, the heroin problem here. So if you get some time, please take a look at that, and then if somebody can give me some guidance as to what the next step would be toward addressing this and implementing it, thank you, and I'd appreciate the hearing in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Mr. Bigelow?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Walter Bigelow, I live at 2818 Carrollton Road. I've lived in the community of Annapolis Road for 22 years. I am past president of the Annapolis Roads Property Owners Association. More importantly, I'm a directly affected citizen that lives on a section of Carrollton Road that will be openly impacted by the Key School's athletic complex and their development plan. This complex will have three multipurpose fields, each of which will be easily divided up into two or three practice fields when there are small kids playing. There's a full-size baseball diamond, eight tennis courts, a swimming pool, and additional indoor facilities in the main pavilion. This complex will easily support over 300 simultaneous users plus all their parents and families, and it also has woefully inadequate parking. The Key School Board is seeking the Office of Planning and Zoning approval for this sports complex, which suggests will be lightly used. Carrollton Road, as previously mentioned, is a single entrance to Annapolis Road. It is a small, undersized collector road. Your own county staff has already ruled Carrollton as a failed road even before building this complex. County reports already indicate that this narrow road with no sidewalks is inadequate to handle the traffic on it today, let alone what the project would generate. For example, the county report suggested that two buses cannot safely pass each other on the road going in opposite directions, it's not wide enough. Added jogger, dog walker, or even one of those kids from Key School on the side of this road, and you've got an accident waiting to happen. There is not a single lightly-used athletic field in this entire county, we all know this. As a parent of three, I've spent many weekends at sporting events, I know this for a fact. Just look at the middle school down on Forest Drive on any weekend day, there are kids all over that place, cars parked everywhere. The very reason Key School is given for needing this sport complex, a complete lack of available playing facilities in Anarundel County, will drive the usage of this complex by Key School and other organizations. You don't spend millions of dollars buying the land, millions of dollars more building up the complex to lightly use it. This is an outright fabrication, reasonable planning was taken into account, reasonable usage. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Manias, I live at 2831 Carrollton Road, which is adjacent to the Key School project as well. My wife and I purchased the property about 14 years ago. At the time of our purchase, we were told by our attorney and the real estate agent that there is no way a project of this magnitude could ever be built there because of the, because it was zoned as open space and with the neighborhood covenants. However, recently, the definition of open space has been changed, and here we are. The other, you know, the concerns of the project, including what Mr. Bigelow stated, they estimated the water usage on the project would be for approximately 10 houses, I'm told. There's no consideration of what happens, or monitoring of what happens if they use more than that, and we're on a peninsula, the aquifer can only support so much. Will I have to drill a new well? Will all my neighbors have to drill new wells because aquifer can't support the increased water usage? We don't know at this point in time, but my understanding from planning and zoning, there will be no limitations on the amount of water that the project can use. That's in addition to the safety concerns based on the additional traffic. I don't believe the traffic study that Key School has done has taken into account weekend usage, summer usage, summer camps. Key School has stated that they don't plan to use lights, but that's certainly, there's no restriction on that as far as I know. So I wish the council would review this with the Office of Planning and Zoning and take a further study on this matter.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no movement in the audience, Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill 5415, Anordinance Concerning Personnel Position in the Classified Service. Bill 5515, Anordinance Concerning Personnel, Anarundel County Fire Department. Bill 5615, Anordinance Concerning Board of Appeals Compensation. Bill 5715, Anordinance Concerning Indian Hills Special Community Benefit District, Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement. Bill 5815, Anordinance Concerning Pines on the Severn, Special Community Benefit District, Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement. Bill 5915, Anordinance Concerning Broadwater Creek Special Community Benefit District. Bill 6015, Anordinance Concerning Mason Beach Special Community Benefit District. Bill 6115, Anordinance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Codes, Property Maintenance Code, Seasonal Waivers.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution 2315, Resolution Approving Appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anarundel County Retirement and Pension System. Resolution 2415, Resolution Approving the Appointment of a Severn River Commission Member.
May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Bills 5112, 4215, and 4515 through 5015 out of order?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote out of order, Bills 5115, 4215, and 4515 through 5015 out of order passes.
Thank you. Section 2205 of the Property Tax Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland acquires the State Department of Assessments and Taxation to certify to all taxing authorities a constant yield property tax rate which will produce the same revenue in the coming year that was produced in the prior taxable year exclusive of new construction. The law further provides that if the taxing authority intends to establish a tax rate greater than the constant yield tax rate, it must advertise and hold a public hearing. An advertisement was placed by this county council in the local newspaper, which adheres to the procedures required by state law, and was reviewed and approved by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. Anarundel County's constant yield rate, tax rates per $100 of taxable assessment for FY 2016 are certified by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation as follows: 92.71 cents for the county excluding Annapolis, .5593 for Annapolis, probably should have read .9271 for the county. Bill number 4115 decreases the real property tax rate from .943 to .936 per $100 assessment for the county, excluding the city of Annapolis, which will generate $5,191,120 in additional property tax revenues above the constant yield amount. Bill number 4115 sets the county tax rate in the city of Annapolis at .559 per $100 of assessment, which is less than the constant yield tax rate of .5593 for real property in the city of Annapolis. As required by law, this public hearing has been scheduled. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on this topic, please come forward and state your name and address, we ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the county council will set the property tax rate for Anarundel County and the city of Annapolis at a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 15th in these chambers. The rate may exceed the constant yield tax rate. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4215.
Anordinance Concerning Anarundel County Consolidated Plan FY 2016 to FY 2020.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the council, Bill 4215 adopts the Anarundel County Consolidated Plan for fiscal year 2016 through fiscal year 2020. The five-year strategic plan establishes the county's goals and strategies and guides the investment in federal housing and community development funds. We've provided the council with a summary of the plan that you all should have before you, as well as the plan itself, and we also addressed this bill at the work session a couple of weeks ago. Kathy Cope from Anarundel Community Development, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law are here to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Chair?
No, just for the record, I'll say we had a good, robust discussion about this at the work session, so I'm supportive of this and don't feel the need to ask any questions, but didn't want anyone to think we didn't already talk about this a lot, so, thanks.
And the county executive is supportive of this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much. We have no one signed up to speak for 4215. If you'd like to speak on this bill, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 4215 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 4215.
Anordinance Concerning Anarundel County Consolidated Plan FY 2016 to FY 2020.
Thank you. Any final discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 4215.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Nay.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Bill 4215 has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5115.
An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Transfer of Funds, Chief Administrative Officer, Contingency, Department of Public Works.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office, Bill 5115, transfer 7.8 million from the CAO contingency account to the Department of Public Works. We had this bill at the work session a couple of weeks back, here to answer any questions the council may have, Greg Africa and Christine Romans from Public Works, as well as Hooja Seen from the Office of Budget.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you all very much. We have no individuals signed up to speak on 5115. If you'd like to speak on this bill, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 5115 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5115.
An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Transfer of Funds, Chief Administrative Officer, Contingency, Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 5115.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill 5115 has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4515.
An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Classified Service Exempt Service.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill 4515 is the pay bill that establishes the pay schedules for the county employees fiscal year 2016. Bill 4515 adds new pay schedules for certain classified employees, and it also adds new pay schedules for the other exempt employees, as well as increase, pay increases for certain employees. We've offered one amendment to clarify that any pay increase is based on performance, will not be awarded to any classified or exempt employee in fiscal year 2016, and we'll discuss that amendment at the appropriate hour of time.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you all very much. We don't have anyone signed up to speak on 4515. If there's anyone like to speak at this bill, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 4515 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4515.
An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Classified Service Exempt Service.
Thank you, there is one amendment?
Amendment number one, this amendment clarifies that pay increases based on performance will not be awarded to any classified or exempt employee during fiscal year 2016.
Thank you, do you have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
We've offered this amendment to clarify that any pay increases for, will be based on performance, will not be awarded to any classified or exempt employee in fiscal year 2016. Susan Harold from Office of Personnel, and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law are here to answer any questions, as we're supposed to address one of the auditor's comments regarding this legislation.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the explanation says this clarifies, I mean, if we weren't to pass this, does that mean that there would be pay increases during FY 16? Or is this to just alleviate any confusion?
The goal was to alleviate any confusion, but Kelly, if you want to...
I just wanted to say, yes, to alleviate confusion and to reference the code sections that talk about pay advancement for different types of employees.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
No.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, amendment number one is passed.
Thank you. Bill 4515, as amendment will be heard on June 15th, 2015. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4615.
An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill 4615 creates four new positions, creates a deputy for aging disabilities, it creates a deputy for central services, and two new positions in the Office of Information Technology. First is the chief IT, chief of IT operations, and the second is chief of network and cybersecurity. Again, this is one of the bills that we discussed at the work session as well. Here from Office of Personnel is Jackie Atkinson, Rick Napolitano from the Office of Information Technology, Doug Jones from Central Services, Pam Jordan from Aging and Disabilities. To answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Mr. Jones, the one that I discussed with you earlier was your deputy, that came up during the discussions, and during that conversation, it sounded like you were sort of on the fence as to whether or not that should be appointed, or...
Yeah, both ways. I am on the fence. I feel that the knowledge that somebody would have if somebody new came in would be good, but at the same point, people want who they want, so it's 50/50. I just want the deputy, so I can cool this place down. I've been down the basement for the last half an hour, trust me.
Have you? I was wondering why it was so warm in here.
Yeah, it just came online again, I got it.
Okay, awesome. All right, any additional questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you all very much. I don't believe we have anyone signed up for this one. Go ahead and open up the public hearing on 4715.
4615.
I'm sorry, 4615. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none. Close the hearing on 4615. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4615.
An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service.
Any final discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 4615.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Nay.
Mr. Walker?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Bill 4615 is defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4715.
An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Exempt Service Assistant Chief of Police and Deputy Police Chief.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, when you're ready?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill 4715 reorganizes the leadership positions and titles in the police department by changing the exempt assistant police chief to be an exempt deputy police chief, maintaining one deputy chief, and creating two exempt deputies. We've provided two organizational charts at the work session, and went over the bill at the work session a couple of weeks ago. We are also offering some technical amendments based on some back and forth between the Office of Law and the auditor. Reference those amendments in a short time, but Major Kramp is here from the police department, as well as Jackie Atkinson from Personnel to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. This time we'll open up the public hearing on 4715. Anyone wishing to speak on this bill? Seeing none, the public hearing on 4715 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4715.
An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Exempt Service Assistant Chief of Police and Deputy Police Chief.
Thank you. We have one amendment, please read the title of amendment number one.
This amendment removes a reference to the numbers of a certain new position being created, clarifies when the current classified deputy police chief position will be eliminated, and removes uncodified language that conflicts with the annual budget and appropriation ordinance.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to adopt?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this amendment is being offered, as Mr. Jones stated, to clarify... to clarify some of the numbers and the wording in the bill. Lori Blair from the Office of Law is here. There's several back and forths between the Office of Law and the auditor on this, and I think we've addressed the auditor's concern regarding the wording in this bill.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Ms. Sutherland, you feel like your questions are answered? Fair enough. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has passed.
Thank you. Bill forty-seven fifteen is amended will be heard on June fifteenth, 2015. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill forty-eight fifteen.
An ordinance concerning personnel classified service overtime pay police communications operator four.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill forty-eight fifteen allows for police communications operators to receive overtime. They previously had disability, but it sunsetted in, excuse me, sunsetted in December of 2014. Here to answer any questions the council may have is, again, Major Krampf and Jackie Atkinson from the Office of Personnel. If the council has any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, my understanding is the reason this was done before, and there was a sunset on it, because there was a plan to address this personnel need. I guess we're doing for that plan did not come to fruition because we're extending this indefinitely. So, I just want to make sure this is the new administration plan to address the need for these, this particular class of personnel, right? I mean, we're not trying to achieve the other plan anymore. It's, we're going to pay them overtime.
Right. And I'll defer to Major Krampf on this. This obviously was an issue that was in play before.
Yeah, predates you, Mr. Marzick, for sure.
Correct.
So...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do you feel like being able to offer overtime will allow you to keep, or hire or retain the folks that provide the service? Because during the work session, we heard this is a pretty important, this is a pretty important job, that it's hard to get people.
That's correct.
So, this is going to do it?
It's going to help. It's going to help maintain staffing levels in the communications center throughout that period of transition that you're discussing. So, when we hire, we bring people in. As you've already alluded to, the complexity of that job, the increased stress levels with employees in that job, so allowing the PCO fours to have the overtime to work as PCO threes is going to help the center immensely.
And is there a ceiling for the amount of overtime one individual can get, the way this works? I just don't want to open up like a blank check, you know?
Well, it's managed by the managers of the center. Lieutenant Sarah Shriver is in charge of the communications center. She looks at that. It's in the administrative bureau, which I'm in charge of. We look at overtime numbers frequently. It's a topic of discussion weekly with Henry Farrell. So, to answer your question specifically, there is no overtime ceiling.
Right.
However, it is managed by the people that control the center.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Ms. Sutherland?
Mr. Chair, if I could, in response to Mr. Trumbauer's question, I think your question was whether this, by paying the police communication operators for overtime, will that help retain people in those positions, in the PCO four positions? Is that correct?
Yeah, that was my question.
You have no vacancies in the PCO fours now, and you didn't two years ago when this bill was before the county council. So, is recruiting and retaining PCO fours a problem? Or is it recruiting and retaining PCO one, two, and threes?
Right, fours is not a problem.
So, this bill has nothing to do with paying overtime to these police communication operator fours because we can't recruit and retain those positions. It's paying those positions overtime to cover shifts for PCO one, twos, and threes that we can't seem to fill. And evidently, we've given up on even trying to fill them. We're just going to pay these guys overtime to work extra shifts in this very stressful job. Is that correct?
I don't know necessarily if that's correct. We're still continuing with hiring PCO one, twos, and threes. Currently, there are no vacancies in PCO ones. We have eleven in PCO twos, three in PCO threes. The issue is the training of the ones and twos, getting them on the floor, and then the supervising of them while they're call-taking. So, to answer your question, there is a plan in place. There has been a training plan in place for many years, and a hiring plan is in place, which has been under Lieutenant Shriver, has increased significantly.
Okay, so if you have a hiring plan in place to fill the PCO one, twos, and threes, is there any reason for the council not to put a sunset clause on this again? Because once you fill the ones, twos, and threes, you don't need the fours to work overtime.
Well, it's been my experience that over the course of these years, this continues to occur because of the stress level of the job, because of the learning curve in the job. It's very difficult. Call-taking is a difficult job. It's hard to learn, and some people just do not cut the training, and they ask to leave.
So, I guess my concern is, this takes care of covering the shifts, but it doesn't seem to solve your problem, just like it didn't solve the problem two years ago when the council put a sunset clause in to give the administration an opportunity to solve that problem.
I would agree with you. I don't think by allowing overtime for PCO fours, it's a necessary function so we could have the staffing levels available for the center. But if you're asking me specifically, is it fixing our ones and twos? No. Because we're going to continue to hire them, we're going to continue to train them, we're going to continue to bring them in the center, and we're going to continue to have the attrition based on the, just on the job characteristics itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pruski?
You're good?
Okay. Any additional questions? Seeing no additional questions. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
We haven't...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We haven't gotten there yet.
I'm already ahead of you. Apologize. Can you...
Do you want to have the public hearing?
Let's have the public hearing on forty-eight fifteen first. There's no one signed up to speak on the bill. Does anyone want to speak on forty-eight fifteen? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on forty-eight fifteen is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of forty-eight fifteen.
An ordinance concerning personnel classified service overtime pay police communications operator four.
How about the amendment number one?
I'm going to do that right now.
All right, awesome.
This amendment allows the paid overtime for certain classified employees for a certain period of time.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a first?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, got it. All right, sorry, I didn't hear that part. Grasso just preceded my first with a second.
I caught the sound waves coming out.
Mr. Marzick?
This amendment's not our amendment.
I understand. Do you have any comments on it?
Oh, we are opposed to this amendment. We, you know, think the bill is written as, the way this policy should be put in place, and I think the major addressed some of these issues as far as what the sunset would have the effect on this, so we do oppose this amendment.
Ms. Sutherland, would you mind explaining to the council the purpose of this amendment?
Yeah, so, when you all, when the county council adopted the bill previously, there was a two-year sunset clause to give the administration two years to solve the underlying problem of filling the PCO one, two, and three positions, as opposed to indefinitely paying management employees time and a half overtime when management employees do not get paid time and a half overtime. So, that underlying problem obviously wasn't solved. This gives an additional year to solve that problem rather than paying the PCO fours time and a half overtime indefinitely. If they've got a plan to fill and recruit and get those PCO one, twos, and threes filled, then the PCO fours don't need to work overtime. So, that's what it does.
Thank you.
I know a bunch of people that need jobs. So, what exactly is the qualifications for this PCO one, two, and three? What is, that makes it so hard to get somebody in these positions?
Well, I don't necessarily know it's so hard to get people in positions. We have a lot of applicants for these openings. It's getting through to training, and then it's getting put on the floor and actually taking active calls for service while you're being supervised, kind of, for lack of a better term, in a fishbowl. And that's stressful for people, and some people just cannot handle that stress. And when you look at PCO ones and twos, they're their first line of defense when you call nine-one-one, and as you all know, as the council knows, there's some very serious phone conversations, and many people just cannot handle that. So, that's kind of why we have the turnover that we have.
But why not develop a plan to actually deal with it?
Well, I think we've developed a hiring plan. The issue is not the hiring plan. The issue is keeping these individuals in those positions. We certainly try to, when an individual comes up and says this job's too stressful, we can't handle, we need to move on, we try to work with that individual and retrain them, so to speak, to take on additional procedures from PCO one to PCO two to PCO three. And quite frankly, some of them just can't handle it, and as a professional communications center in the state of Maryland, we don't want those types of individuals being our first line of defense handling calls for service.
But like, as an example, I mean, I'm told, and I don't know this for a fact because I've never been one, but I'm told that air traffic controllers, it's like one of the most stressful jobs around, and they make over a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, why not make the case back to the council and say that basically what we're getting isn't people that are willing to do the job, the pay's not commensurate with the stress level, and then come back to us with a suggestion like that? What's the problem?
We could certainly do that. Over the years, we have looked at many different aspects of those jobs, looking at wellness of the employees, looking at different aspects of the actual working conditions, the fishbowl effect, if you will, of the communications center, putting in chairs for downtime and doing many, many different things for the morale and doing things for those employees. To be quite honest with you, Mr. Walker, some of those things just don't work. Employees, some employees just do not take to the stress levels that is involved in that job, and we have to replace them.
But we're not the only ones who are dealing with this.
No, sir.
So, what are we doing differently, or what are other jurisdictions doing that they're not having the same problem that we're having?
Many of our area jurisdictions have PCO fours working overtime.
But there's nobody else that has a plan that... Ms. Sutherland, do you have something?
There are many that have PCO fours working overtime, but they either are represented employees who negotiated it, or often they are subject to FLSA because they're not management employees under the definition of FLSA. So, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. And I guess along the lines of what you're saying, are you aware of who, I don't want to say does it, right, who doesn't have this problem? What, you know, have you researched jurisdictions who are able to retain their people, and what are they doing that they're able to?
I can't answer that specifically for you. I have not done that research myself.
Okay.
I can only share, from my personal experience, twenty-five years in law enforcement, every jurisdiction has the same type of problem, not only for call-takers, but for police officers, for animal control officers, for any of those employees that are put out in danger every day in the stressful situations. Every jurisdiction that I'm aware of has these same type of issues.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Grasso.
Just for my own law, what exactly, like a PCO one, what is the difference between them and a two?
The PCO ones are actually the call-takers. They're the ones that ask you, please fire, and then PCO twos are actually dispatchers working to dispatch those calls with the threes.
So, who would have the most stress? In other words, the ones saying, my friend was shot, and all that kind of stuff?
Ones and twos have the most stress in that center. Not ever being a call-taker, not ever being, work, you know, having to work in the center. I'm being very gentle here when I say ones and twos probably have the most stress, but as, I'm sure some of you have, you've toured that facility, it's a very stressful job. It's a fishbowl. They are constantly being called. There's very few people, Mr. Grasso, that call and say, thank you, Mr. Police and Mr. Call-Taker. Most of them are calling because they need something.
Right.
And that's difficult on people, day in and day out, hour after hour, and that's what we're dealing with.
Okay. And let me just, what is the actual starting pay of us, say, the PCO one? What exactly did it get?
I don't have that answer.
Best guess? I'll throw five thousand, give or take. Forty thousand dollar a year job, same as like a police officer, plus, less?
No, I wouldn't want to guess.
Was it an hourly job?
I don't have it.
I don't have it.
Okay. Well, I'll just...
Sutherland can look it up.
Yeah, in any cases, let me know what it is. No big deal. Call me on the phone.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Teresa's got it. Right, Teresa? All right. Mr. Pruski?
Tom, may I just ask, what does a PCO four do?
PCO four is a supervisor in charge of the entire center. So, a PCO four would be kind of on equal terms as a platoon commander, has the whole center for that evening, takes care of all the administrative functions, takes care of all the functions for the center, as well as the patrolmen that are working out on the street.
The PCO four that were, that were looking to grant overtime to here?
That's correct. They work down in grade in a PCO two or PCO three function.
Thank you.
Mr. Grasso, it appears that a PCO one is at seventeen twenty-four an hour, entry maximum of twenty-five twenty-nine an hour.
It's not a bad piece of change.
No, it's not bad.
Okay. I know where I'm sending my son.
We'll put him in the process.
Any additional...
No scrutiny.
Now, that's one you don't want in there, boy, because I tell you, he's like this, he bounces off the walls. First call out, man, there.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, Bill forty-eight fifteen will be heard as amended on June fifteenth. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill forty-nine fifteen.
An ordinance concerning employees and police service retirement plans, county attorney and chief of police retirement dates.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, when you're ready?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill forty-nine fifteen allows the police chief
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill 4915 allows the police chief and the county attorney to receive the deserved pension due at the time of separation from the county service, provided he or she is not removed for willful misconduct. The goal of this bill is to ensure the police chief and the county attorney are able to offer candid advice to the county executive and the county council without fear of losing a potential pension if they are removed from service. We're trying to give these positions more independence from any pressure they may feel to look out, excuse me, for their own best interest as it comes, relates to their pension. The county executive believes protecting these pensions will help ensure these officials act in the best interest of the county. The police chief and the county attorney are the two positions most likely to be confronted with a criminal or inappropriate activity by the county executive or others, and we want to make sure they are free to carry out their duties. We also will be offering two amendments that will address some of the concerns raised both during the work session and subsequently by the auditor related to this bill. Here to answer any questions are John Peterson and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law. We would ask for your favorable support of 4915.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Marzick, how do you distinguish between, let's say, I know we sort of had this discussion the other day when we were in work session, between the county attorney, the police chief, and say, the controller, whose job also could be faced with fraud or other types of criminal activity within the county government? I mean, I just don't get the reason why we're protecting people who are appointed. They take those positions and those roles, and with that comes the risk of walking out the door at any moment. They serve at the pleasure of the county executive.
Sure. I think it's a good question. I think that there's a difference in our reasoning behind this bill. And I think at the work session, things really went off in a different direction as to, I was hoping to kind of emphasize that tonight, that the goal of this bill is not seen as a protection of people working for the county executive. Our goal is to provide more independence and to allow these people to work more independently and not feel bound to their position and work serving at will of the county executive.
If they have a problem with serving at will, though, if the administration feels like that there's a potential issue with them serving at will, wouldn't it be better then to make, to make the case to the council that there needs to be a change in those positions, that maybe they shouldn't be at-will-appointed positions? Why protect their pensions? I mean, why, why say, oh, well, you know, you keep the job because we want to protect your pension? You can take this job, but don't worry, we'll protect your pension. I don't, I don't understand that.
I think that there are, there's really one reason, I think, to get back to your original question. I think the difference between the controller, the difference between anyone else in these positions, is that the police chief and the county attorney are the ones most likely to be dealing with any legal criminal activity as it relates to the county executive. And I think that's the reason for why they are singled out in this bill as opposed to planning zoning or control or whomever it may be.
So why not offer them a protection in the form of approval by the council for their removal of their position? I mean, the county attorney technically works for the council just as much as she does or he does for the, for the county executive.
Absolutely.
So why not give them, why not have the executive support situation where he has to come back to the council and get a super majority of the council to agree to remove the person from the position?
First time I've heard that suggestion. I haven't talked to the county executive about that.
All we're concerned about is protecting their pension, though. That just doesn't...
Mr. Chairman?
We're actually concerned about protecting their...
I think it's to give a, an added level of comfort to these people who are, or who could potentially be in a position where they would be at risk of losing, you know, a career and a pension that has been built up. Obviously, in this situation, the police have a pension system that's much different than other county employees. And I think that the idea with the county attorney being involved as well is that that position would be the one who would be, as I mentioned, most likely to be dealing with any criminal issues related to the county executive.
The county attorney actually does get a pension. I mean, if they've got a certain number of years in.
Correct.
And the police chief could also collect a pension if he switched into the employee pension plan.
Correct.
So are we really just concerned about protecting pension, then, if they both have access to collect pension?
That's, that's not what I'm saying at all. I think I've tried to make it very clear. I mean, if the council feels that that's the reasoning behind the bill, that's, you know, one thing. But I think, you know, our goal is really to provide, try to provide some independence in these positions.
But the independence is gained by protecting their pension?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Fink?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a pretty interesting bill for the administration to send down because, you know, I kind of look at it as saying, the county executive is kind of giving away his lunge over the police chief and the county attorney if we pass this bill. But right now, he's able to, or she's able to, hold that over their police chief so their police chief doesn't come forward and talk about maybe that, you know, they're having the officers ride around and pick up campaign contributions, or they got to turn around and hide some certain things. So, you know, he would no longer be able to dangle that over his head. So I'm surprised the administration's sending it down, but I think it's a good thing. I see it as a way of you guys really giving up a lot of leverage or some power that you might have over these two individuals. And I think it makes a lot of sense. And, you know, I say that because obviously at the public hearing, I think I went, or the work session, I went on for over an hour on this bill. And I think I've kind of see where you're coming from on an hour. Originally, I thought we were protecting the pensions and thought that was a good idea. But now I kind of see it as a different way that, you know, really, you're giving up that leverage. And not any, not every administration would do that. Not every person would do that. So I think it's a good bill. I see where you're coming from. And, you know, I hope the rest of the council sees that, too, that, you know, we've, we've been in a situation before where maybe we've had a police chief that was worried about that pension and was not willing to, to maybe come forward, and maybe that was the right thing for that person to do, maybe it wasn't, maybe there was nothing there. But, you know, if, if that person was guaranteed a pension either way, maybe things would have turned out a lot different than they did. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith, before you, before you, I'll just say that if they're in that position, I would hope that they're, they realize that they're in a trusted position where they've taken an oath to, to do the right thing, and that a pension wouldn't sway whether or not they do the right thing in that position. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
So I'm still, I'm still lost, and I know we talked about this at the work session previously, on, on the county attorney. Because if they are removed from office, if they're vested, they'll still get their retirement. So I'm just not, I get the police chief, not saying that I necessarily support that whole concept, but I completely do not get the county attorney, because they would still get their pension if they were removed from office. So would the administration be opposed to removing the county attorney from that bill? Because whether this bill passes or not, they still, the county attorney would still receive a pension if they're vested.
Sure. If the council chose to remove the county attorney, we would still support the bill. I think, again, this gets to the issue of the purpose for the bill...
Check.
...is to provide that independence in both of these positions, that we felt that there was a need to provide that independence.
But, but with the county attorney, that, that need doesn't exist. I mean, that, it just confuses, it muddles down or waters down, you know, for me at least, I think, when I look at both of them, they're apple and oranges. And so when you have them in the same bill like this and saying that it gives them sort of leverage to be able to sort of voice their opinion independently, but I worry about their pension, well, the county attorney wouldn't have to worry about that anyway if they're vested, because they would still receive their pension.
John Peterson, Assistant Personnel Officer, the distinction would be that the county attorney would be eligible for their pension upon separation rather than waiting as a vested employee till age 60 to begin receiving their pension. So if the county attorney were separated under this bill tomorrow, the first of next month, they would be eligible to begin receiving their pension. If they, outside of this bill, they would have to wait, because they're a vested employee, they'd have to wait till they reached age 60 to begin being eligible for that pension. So this bill just allows them to begin immediate, immediate eligibility upon separation.
We're giving them more of a benefit, then? Is that what you're saying? I'm sorry? We're giving them more of a benefit, then? Otherwise, you'd have to wait. But now, because this bill passes, we're going to give it to them right away?
Yes.
Correct.
But, hold on just a second. Ms., Ms. Tate had a question.
It's for Mr. Peterson. Who is the reporting authority if something happens between an employee and someone in the county executive's office? Say, harassment situation or something like that?
The officer personnel?
So the personnel officer. But the personnel officer who would get that information and probably did get that information wouldn't be protected under this bill either?
This bill does not extend to the personnel officer.
Okay. Yet they would be the, are there any other departments where they're the direct reporting authority? Aren't they for the county council? Because we did a bill, so if something happened, yeah, so...
Mr. Chairman?
No, I'll just go ahead and give everybody pension as soon as they retire, as soon as they get fired. Mr. Trumpa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's no, in this legislation, there's no minimum amount of service to be in the police chief or the county attorney position, right? I mean, there's, there's a total participant, you know, year of service in the actual plan, but there's nothing that says this, this benefit would only be available if you serve as police chief for a year or some minimum. Is that correct?
Correct. There's a minimum level of planned participation to be eligible for the benefit, but not from the date of appointment.
Yeah. Because I'm looking at this in the terms of extremes, where I don't see anything in this bill as it's drafted that would prevent a scenario, however unlikely, where the county executive appoints a police chief, a month later, he's like, "That dude ain't working out." So gets rid of him or her, and then now they've got this very, what appears to be generous benefit, right?
Indeed, and it has happened. So, if I might, because I think other than...
I'll use my time to the auditor.
Perhaps Lori Blair and perhaps Mr. Atkinson, I'm not sure anybody else in this audience was around when this happened, but we had an elected and appointed pension plan. And the benefits in that plan were greatly enhanced in the late 80s by county executive Lighthizer and that county council because they wanted to be able to retain these department heads. How can we get these department heads to come here? How can we get them to stay? You know, they're young, they might only get 16 years, and then they're going to leave, and they'll have nothing to show for it because we have to have 30 years to get a pension, or we have, you know, or they'll have to wait till they're age 60. So in the elected and appointed pension plan, the benefit was 2.5% a year like it is for the police and firefighters. And you could retire with 16 years regardless of age. We had a merit system employee who was appointed by a county executive, so he went from the classified employees pension plan to the A&E pension plan, and he quit the next day. And his entire pension came out of the A&E plan. So you're coming up with a hypothetical abuse? That is a factual situation that happened. I believe that every county attorney who doesn't, who isn't going to be retained by an incoming county executive, and every police chief who isn't going to be retained by an incoming county executive, will be terminated and given this gift on the last day of the incumbent county executive's day of office.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fink?
What is the reason for giving the county attorney a pension right off the bat? Right away? We get rid of you, we're going to give you a pension tomorrow, you might be 38 years old.
Again, I would just clarify that it's not, you wouldn't be able to be 38, you'd have to meet the minimum qualifications within the bill, just to clarify.
Fifty. Fifty. So what's the reason for doing that?
Again, I think it's the idea that, we hadn't thought up with respect to the auditor and others, we hadn't really thought about the, I guess, negative opportunities under this bill. I think our goal was to provide an incentive to, to people in the county to be independent actors and not feel burdened by what could be a negative situation for their pension.
It seems like, I mean, I thought I supported this bill when we started, but it seems like we're giving you an incentive to get fired. I mean, why wouldn't you come to work and say, "I'm going to get fired today?" That's the ugliest tie I've ever seen, Mr. County Executive. Who dressed you this morning?
Because you would lose, you would lose your job, and you would lose...
You'd lose your job, but you're a lawyer, I mean, you go out and, you know, maybe make more money working non-for-the-county, and you got your full pension coming in anyway. And that's a completely different scenario. That never even made it in the work session about that. I mean, we kind of skipped right over that point. We spent a lot of time on this bill.
Ms. Tate?
We did discuss this at the work session. We did discuss the...
Would the attorney get the bill right off, the attorney get the pension right off the bat?
We went through in great detail on that.
There's no way. Does anybody else remember that?
Yeah.
I, I'm just surprised that, I guess with the county attorney being a member of the bar, they should be candid with their client anyway, whether they have this golden parachute waiting for them or not. They have an obligation to do that as part of their professional standards. So I'm kind of, that's the one thing that I keep coming back to, aside from, I guess, the language that's going to be changed if the amendment passes. But I just, that's the part I'm missing. I understand the police chief, but I, I have, you know, an issue with having a piece of legislation for one person if you take out the county attorney, so...
I don't see a difference between the police chief and the county attorney.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I think they both have an oath that they follow, so it's just, to me, but it's, it's, it's a high standard. I mean, at least you try to make it a high standard.
Mr. Pruski has the next, and Mr. Grasso?
Following up with Mr. Walker's comments, Mr. Marzick, I'm actually interested in the county executive's position on the council, you know, obviously a super majority may be removing select officials. I wasn't here, but it predated me, where this council had a difficult vote on a health officer. And certainly, they had to take a stance and deal with an issue. And again, I know that's a little bit different because that's, that's the health officer, but if there's a consideration made where someone is being terminated and, you know, there's some safeguards there in terms of having a super majority on the council, that might be a direction as opposed to what we're trying to do here. So I, I would really like to hear the county executive's position.
I haven't talked to the county executive about it.
Understood, but I mean, saying what was suggested.
I can get back to you easily, sure.
Yeah.
You know, I think that it's obvious there's a lot of concerns on this bill. I think, you know, I think Mr. Fink made the point earlier that we are trying to essentially cede power over two appointed officials. You know, if the council doesn't seem fit to pass this bill, then, you know, the bill will fail. I mean, if there are, you know, other opportunities that we can discuss, you know, further down the road, or, you know, we'd be more than willing to have that discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Trumpa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Marzick, so responding to your latest comments, I mean, I'm, I'm willing, I think this bill needs some more work. I mean, I understand why you're putting it forward. I think Mr. Fink articulated that. I'm willing to entertain that idea. I'll vote for these amendments tonight, but I, we, we need, we need more fixes to this bill.
Sure.
So I'm just letting, letting my council colleagues know, I'm willing to keep working on this, but I don't support the current version of the bill. If we, if we want to amend it tonight, I think it'll require additional amendments even, but that's where I am on it.
Mr. Grasso was next, I think.
Hypotheticals again here, okay? So I'm trying to get my hand around this deal. So the police chief has, I don't know, five years' time in Anto-Romano County, and the county executive fires him. What happens? Currently, today, he gets nothing, right?
Correct.
All right. If this bill passed before we did all this amendment change, what would happen then?
A new police chief with five years?
Yeah.
Wouldn't be eligible for anything.
He would what?
Wouldn't be eligible for anything.
He's doing these 10 years, right?
So he's got to get at least 10 years in, then, right?
Well, it depends. So if a police chief elected, a new police chief elected to go into the employees' plan, they would need at least eight years.
Eight years, right. So in our situation with our...
If it's a new employee, is that what you said?
Yeah, if they're hired from the outside.
Right.
Right, but if it's somebody, you're asking about somebody from the outside, Mr. Grasso? I'm just trying to clarify.
In both cases. In both cases.
He's saying, he's saying new employee and somebody hired from inside.
Right. In other words, like, our chief has 32 years in. So I get his whole deal that if the next day they come in and says, "I don't like you anymore," and fires him, then he loses 32 years.
He's got 16, he's got 16 years.
Has he got 16?
He's got 16.
I thought it was 32. Okay, so 16 in Anto-Romano, and he would lose that. Right? So this bill would basically say...
Unless he transfers to the employees' plan.
So this bill, if it was to pass, would turn around and say, "Okay, chief, you got 16 years," and he would start getting retired. But doesn't he have to wait till a certain age?
I think it's the police...
Not under this bill, no.
Not under this bill. So it automatically would start.
Right. So under the police plan, that there's 20 years of service as a normal retirement regardless of age.
Right.
So this would just allow someone with less than 20 years but more than 15 to get that pension.
And if that police chief who had 15 years chose to transfer to the employees' plan, he would not lose his 15 years of pension.
But he'd have to do that before he was fired, though, right?
Yes, I think he has to do it within a year of being appointed.
Right. And if he goes into the employee...
It already, it's already allowed.
So if he goes into the employees' plan, it's a difference in compensation, though, right?
There's a difference in your pension benefit. You get 2% a year instead of 2.5% a year. When 20 and out and 2.5% a year was enacted, the golden egg, as Mr. Fink called it, it was meant to, to reward, I'm going to use the word reward, an employee who spent their career here. All 20 years here, we're going to, you know, give you a, a good pension. If a police chief had 15 years in the merit system as a police officer or captain, whatever, who then becomes the police chief, he could transfer to the employees' plan, he would who then becomes the police chief, he could transfer to the employees' plan, he would get 2% a year instead of 2.5 a year. But he's gonna get 2% of a much higher salary than 2.5% of the lower salary as a captain, right? He's gonna be making $30,000 or $40,000 dollars a year more.
More than that, because he was making in the 90s before he became chief, and now he's making $150,000.
Another option is to, because they already had the option of participating in the employees' plan, is once they get their 20 years, pass a bill that lets them go back to the police plan. So take the risk, if you get, if you don't make it to 20, you're gonna get something. But if you do make it to 20, you've, you've done your career here, which is what 20 and out was meant for, we'll put you back in the police plan. There's, there's all sorts of options.
Legally, he can't do that right now.
No. Once you make that transfer when you're appointed, then that's where you are.
So does the administration support that, Mr. Marzick?
I have to talk to the county executive about it. I haven't considered that option.
Any additional questions from the council? All right, this time we'll open up the public hearing on Bill 4915. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 4915 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 4915.
An ordinance concerning employees and police service retirement plans, county attorney and chief of police retirement dates.
Thank you. We have amendment number one. Please read the title.
Amendment number one. This is a technical amendment conforming the format of this subsection to proper code construction.
Is there a motion to adopt?
To move.
Second. Mr. Marzick?
Both of these amendments are to address some of the concerns raised, both in the work session and by the auditor. Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law is here to answer any questions you may have regarding this to the specific sections of the code where it's being referred back to.
Any questions? Before we vote on this, I'm just gonna suggest that we vote against these amendments tonight. And I understand, but I think we should just vote against this amendment, these amendments tonight, kill the bill tonight, and have them come back with something different that's probably more in line with allowing the police chief to switch over and switch back. I'm not as concerned with the county attorney, no offense to Ms. Duden, but I do feel like there needs to be something for the chief and giving him the flexibility to bump back to the plan after he's bumped over to the employee, I think is a fair position for us to take. But that's just my, my take on things.
Mr. Chairman.
Other discussion.
We asked for comment from the Pension Oversight Commission and have not gotten a letter back from them yet, so we can have two.
Well, if you-
There's no official word back, Mr. Atkinson?
We do have it.
No, sir. The police bill was withdrawn, but it cannot be voted on.
All right. Well, I'm still gonna vote against the amendments. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pritzke?
No.
Mr. Purtka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment number one is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of amendment number two.
This amendment clarifies that the proposed retirement date applies only if the participant is terminated by the county executive who appointed the participant, and does not apply if the participant resigns and modifies the definition of willful misconduct.
Thank you. A motion to adopt?
To move.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
This amendment dealt with some of the concerns raised regarding the definition of willful misconduct that were raised at the work session. Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law is here to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Tate?
We had some, we have a markup, so I can read this if you'd like to hear it. If this amendment passes, the language would read, "In the event the participant has reached age 50, has at least eight years of actual planned service, and is terminated by the same county executive who appointed the participant without evidence of willful misconduct by the participant the date of separation from employment. And for the purposes of paragraph 6.2, willful misconduct means a knowing violation of a law, regulation, or policy, intentional disregard for the best interests of the county or its citizens, or for the rights or safety of its employees or citizens, or a willful mis, disregard of the duties and obligations of the position held." That's how the bill would read, as opposed to how it reads now if this amendment passes.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
For both, for both, the language is the same for both individuals.
Thank you. Any additional discussion by the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pritzke?
No.
Mr. Purtka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment number two is passed.
Thank you. Bill 4915, as amended, will be heard on June 15, 2015. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5015.
An ordinance concerning deferred retirement option programs, fire service retirement plan, police service retirement plan, and detention officers and deputy sheriffs retirement plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we did get a comment from the Pension Oversight Commission on this bill.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill 5015 allows detention officers and deputy sheriffs to enter the deferred retirement option program, here to answer questions that the council may have, are John Peterson from Personnel, Major Cranch from Police, I believe is still around, and Bill Barton from Detentions and Corrections.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you all very much. I don't believe we have anyone signed up to speak on 5015. We'll open up the public hearing right-
We have one person signed up.
Oh, we do? Oh, my apologies, Dale. I thought that was a page from- Sorry. Are you ready?
All right. Good evening. My name is Dale Waldorf, 876 Clathy Avenue, Vampires, Maryland, 21054. I'd just like to say that we are all for Bill 5015, and we would be very grateful if the county council would vote on this bill. It would help for retention as well as attracting hires, or new hires. As you know, over the past several years, we've been running about 17% shortage, and I think that this would help retain good veteran staff. It's your veteran staff, it's who your younger juvenile staff kind of lean on for advisement on how to handle situations and things like that. So again, if you can vote in favor of that, I'd be very grateful.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on 5015? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 5015 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5015.
An ordinance concerning deferred retirement option programs, fire service retirement plan, police service retirement plan, and detention officers and deputy sheriffs retirement plan.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Trumpauer?
I just wanted very quickly to ask the administration if they agreed with the blue letter assessment that there was a fiscal note, for lack of a better word, of $1.2 Because the, the green, the green letter attached to the, to the bill says that the legislation, the fiscal impact is included in the FY '16 proposed budget, but doesn't, doesn't reference a number. So I, I just wanted to check with you guys that the $1.2 million in the auditor's letter was accurate.
John Peterson, Assistant Personnel Officer. The $1.2 million is the entire cost to detention and, the increase in liabilities to the deputy, deputy, I'm sorry, detention officers and deputy sheriff's retirement plan. That's being amortized over a seven-year period, so it's not an immediate impact, and we won't know the true cost to, to the general fund until next year's actuarial evaluation, which would then bring the cost out for the employer contributions to the detention plan. But there is a $1.2 million overall increase in liabilities to the plan.
But you don't know what that does in terms of real FY '16 dollars? Is that what you're saying?
It won't have any impact to FY '16, because FY '16's contributions have already been assigned. It would be FY '17.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Purtka?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Peterson, there was a, I'm sorry. There was a discussion about this at, at the work session, and I, if I vote against this bill, it won't be because I don't feel like it's a question of fairness, because to extend it, if we currently have it with some people, to extend it to others. It will be because I don't quite understand its efficacy in the first place. Would you just take a minute and explain what this does and why it's good for the county?
Well, first, I would say it was a negotiated benefit. It came out of collective bargaining, and so it was an agreed-upon benefit enhancement to the members of those plans. So the county has made an agreement to put forward this bill on behalf of coming out of that, those negotiations. Drop plans are plans that retain employees beyond when they might actually retire, and keep them, and give the, the county the ability to do some succession planning, because they'll know at what point people will be leaving, three, four, or five years. It also serves as a recruitment and retention tool for existing employees, as Mr. Waldorf testified to just a little bit ago. You know, his members see that as definitely as a retention tool and a recruitment tool for, for their employees.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe I could ask, Madam Chairman, do you have any other comment on this? Excuse me, Madam Oliver. Do you have any other? Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Wow, you get demoted.
I don't, I don't have any comment other than the comments that I put in my blue letter. You know, a deferred retirement option program is intended to manage turnover, as John said, where you know when people are leaving and you can manage that, and, you know, it only, originally, it only allowed so many people to join every year, so you knew no more than thirty, you know, 30 could join every year, and no more than 30 could leave in three years. We've gotten away from all that. Ms. Fulton said that it was intended to be a recruitment tool, which I think opens up the policy of, well, if it's such a great recruitment tool, why aren't we doing it for everybody if we're trying to recruit the best employees? And Ms. Fulton said, Ms. Rhodes, I'm sorry, said, well, you know, it was, it's only other public safety employees in other counties have a drop. Well, great, that makes it an even better recruitment tool for us for non-public safety. So, you know, it's, it's up to, you know, the county council, whether, it definitely has a cost. It is not cost neutral. Whether you think those benefits outweigh that cost is your decision.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So the county executive supported this as part of the negotiations with the bargaining groups?
The county executive, yes.
And is it, is it common practice for them to, I mean, if this is a recruitment tool, as has been stated, wouldn't it be better to bring it to the council first to get our approval of it before it's offered as part of negotiation process? I mean, it seems, it seems like it was offered as part of the negotiation process, but now you gotta come to us to ask for it.
I was gonna say that. Pretty much the-
Not if it's a recruitment tool. Recruitment's for new employees. New employees aren't covered by union agreements.
All negotiations are.
All negotiations are, but if the point-
Salaries are for new employees as well.
Ms. Rhodes said that the reason this was offered was as, it was a great recruiting tool.
I don't remember her exact testimony, but I believe it is a recruitment and retention tool.
Well, okay, we looked it up.
Okay.
So.
Fair enough. Any additional questions? All right. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please, I'm gonna call the roll. Call the roll, yes, thank you.
Mr. Fink?
5015. Aye.
Mr. Pritzke?
Aye.
Mr. Purtka?
Nay.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill 5015 is passed.
Thank you. Okay. We will be holding a joint public hearing for Bills number 3015 through 3915. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bills 3015 through 3915.
Bill 3015, an ordinance concerning tax levies, special community benefit district, shore erosion control districts, and waterways improvement districts. Bill 3115, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill 3215, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill 3315, an ordinance concerning tax levy Cedar Hills Special Taxing District. Bill 3415, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill 3515, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill 3615, an ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill 3715, an ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill 3815, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill 3915, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Village South at Wachappel Special Taxing District.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Hammond, Chief Administrative Officer. As you heard the administrative officer of the council read, these are all bills that relate to the special taxing districts that we have in the county, including the 90 special community benefit districts, shore erosion control districts, and the waterway improvement districts. And then we have the remaining bills deal with special development districts, special taxing districts involving Arundel Gateway and Arundel Mills, which are two tax increment districts that have special taxing districts underneath them. The tax rate in these special taxing districts, those two, is zero. Cedar Hill is a development district that has not yet sold bonds, so the taxing rate there is zero. Dorchester is a development district around the Arundel Mills Mall. It's been in existence for about 15 years or so, and has a tax rate set depending upon the kind of development on the property, be it a townhouse or a single-family dwelling unit. Farmington Village is another special district that has been in existence, again, for about 15 or so years, up in the Pasadena area, and has rates associated with the type of development, be it a townhouse, a small or a large, single-family dwelling. National Business Park is a special taxing district that backs up a tax increment district and has a tax rate proposed of zero. The National Business Park North is a special taxing district that backs up another tax increment district, and there is tax rate established for the eight or so parcels that are undeveloped in the, in that district. Two Rivers is another special development district in the western part of the county, over west, a little bit west of Crofton, and it is a special taxing district that levies taxes based upon the kind of homes that will be built there, be it attached or detached. And the last one, the Village South at Wachappel, is a backup to another tax increment district, and the tax rate there is zero.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. This time we'll open the public hearing on Bills number 3015 through 3915. I have no one signed up to speak on those. If anyone would like to, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bills 3015 through 3915 are now closed. We will now be holding a joint public hearing for Bills 4015 and 4115. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bills 4015 and 4115.
Bill 4015, an ordinance concerning property tax and semi-annual payments service charge. Bill 4115, an ordinance concerning property tax and semi-annual payment service charge.
Thank you.
I don't know what, usually do it on a, Steve Chute.
Mr. Marzick? Mr. County Executive, when you're ready?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office. We are here to testify in support of the county executive's bill to lower the property taxes in the county, and I'll defer to the county executive on Bill 4015.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the council, thank you for having me to your chamber to introduce Bill 4015. I know this is unusual, but the subject matter is important. Based on my eight years as a state delegate and three years on the road campaigning for county executive, I believe very strongly that tax relief is the most pressing issue facing our county. That belief is confirmed by the recent community college poll that identified overtaxation as the number-one concern of county residents. Throughout the campaign, I put forward a plan to reduce the tax burden on our citizens. Last November, the people of Antioch County spoke loudly and clearly and endorsed my plan. Maryland is the fourth-most taxed state in the United States, and Antioch County is Last November, the people of Anarundel County spoke loudly and clearly and endorsed my plan. Maryland is the fourth-most taxed state in the United States, and Anarundel County is the ninth-most taxed county out of twenty-four jurisdictions in the state. Our taxes are higher than those of Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and Prince George's County. We only look good by comparison to such places as Montgomery and Howard Counties, two of the most overtaxed counties in the entire United States. And that tax burden is increasing. The cost of county government per household has increased from forty-seven hundred dollars in two thousand and eight to nearly six thousand dollars today, despite stagnating household incomes. As a share of family budgets, the cost of county government has increased from five-point-five percent nine years ago to six-point-six percent today. That's a twenty percent increase in the relative burden of local government over the last decade. That, that's an incredible statistic. The cost of government has increased on a relative basis by twenty percent over the last decade for citizens of this county. Local government is taking too big a bite out of family budgets. Property taxes are a major contributor, contributor to this increasing burden of government. Despite the property tax revenue cap that we think protects us, property tax revenues have increased at an average annual rate of four percent over the last ten years, far faster than the rate of inflation. The burden of property taxes falls disproportionately on the elderly and those on fixed incomes. That's why tax relief, I believe, should be focused on property taxes. My budget calls for a three percent reduction in property tax rates. Under our plan, the rate will fall to ninety-point-eight cents per one hundred dollars of appraised value, which is three percent below the rate allowed by the property tax revenue cap. That's a real cut that will put nineteen million dollars back into taxpayers' pockets next year and every year thereafter, and will spur economic growth and job creation. Bill forty fifteen will provide hundreds of dollars of relief to taxpayers and working families over the next several years. And it's affordable, representing about one-point-three percent of our one-point-four-billion-dollar budget. This proposed rate reduction is a modest, measured solution to a growing problem. My goal is to help make Anarundel County the best place to live, work, and start a business in the state of Maryland. This tax cut is integral to that effort and will send an important message to those who live here and those who may want to live here. We're demonstrating that the days of ever-increasing tax burden is over in this county, and I ask the county council to please join me in supporting this important legislation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. County Executive. Could you submit those comments to Ms. Officer, Ms. Madam? Thank you very much, appreciate that for the record.
Mr. Chair?
Any question? Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Procedural question. I'd like to ask the County Executive some questions, but I also want to introduce my bill. So, is there a preferred order that you would like?
However you'd like to handle it.
Well, since he has the floor, perhaps we'll ask questions now.
That's fine.
When we're done, then I'll give a very brief summary of mine. Thank you, Mr. Executive. It's good to see you here.
Good to see you.
In front of the council, as always. You referenced how high Anarundel County taxes are and said, I forget, we're the ninth-highest or something like that. Do you remember what, how high are we?
We are the ninth-highest per capita in dollars.
Okay. In, as opposed to pounds?
As opposed to rates.
Okay.
I, I think it's important that we look at tax dollars paid. It's very often the case that these rankings are made in rates, but real people don't pay rates. Real people pay in dollars.
Understood. So, I'm sure you're familiar, but I've been on the council for four years, and every year, Mr. Hammond is the Budget Officer or CIO, or a combination of Budget Officer and CIO, has given us a presentation. And I, I found that the charts and graphs in this year's presentation seem different than the previous years, so I asked the auditor to go back and, and give us the, the rankings, if you will, consistent with how I was used to seeing them over the last four. And first of all, I mean, I don't think either of us would dispute, but Anarundel County has the third-lowest local income tax in Maryland. The only two that are lower than us are Talbot and Worcester Counties. That, that is a rate. But then, the, the interesting one was on the property tax rate, the auditor's analysis showed that we had the seventh-lowest property tax rate in Maryland and that we were lower than several of the counties that, in, in your presentation, we were listed as higher. And look, I, I have a science degree. I know you can make charts and graphs do all kinds of things. I'm, I'm just interested in, in what we had been shown the last four years and presumably the four years before that and what we're seeing now.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, just one, one last thing, if I might. And then, the total tax burden, as a percentage of per capita income by Maryland County, the auditor's assessment shows us seventh-lowest. The counties that were lower than us are Somerset, Allegheny, Wickhamico, Talbot, Caroline, and Washington, none of whom, I would say, are in our county's metropolitan peer group. So, so yes, I would, I would love to comment on that.
Okay. You mentioned that our property tax rate was much more attractive, attractive on a relative basis as opposed to property taxes paid. That's a great example of, of what I was alluding to earlier, because the rate, the percentage rate, only tells half the story. You have to look at assessed values to determine what a person actually pays.
Sure.
And Anarundel County has very high assessed values. This is a very expensive area to live. Housing values are high. So, a person on a fixed income who may have been in their home for ten, twenty, thirty years and has now paid off all the mortgage and is living on a fixed income, may be paying very, very high dollar amounts of property taxes, even though the rate compared to the rate of Garrett County is relatively low. It's because housing values are half as high in Garrett County. In terms of the comparisons that you've been seeing in the past, my recollection of prior year's presentations is that they generally only included the large central Maryland counties. Well, it just so happens, for example, Montgomery, Howard County, it just so happens that those large central Maryland counties are among the most heavily taxed counties in the entire United States. And to pat ourselves on the back because we look a little bit better than they do is just kidding ourselves. We are very highly, we are very highly taxed by national standards. And I didn't catch your third one, because I was trying to jot a note about the first two.
No, it's just the total tax burden. I mean, I think you're.
It's the same, it's the same issue. If you look at the total tax burden, Maryland probably ranks around eighth or ninth on rates. But when you look at the dollars paid, what people, the checks people actually write, we move up to fourth. And it's because of high property tax, it's high assessed values and other factors that lead to high tax bills. We also have high incomes, which means those slightly lower income tax rates, and they're very slightly lower, lead to big dollar payments that people have to fork over to the government.
One more question, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you. I have one more question, Mr. County Executive, but before I do, I just, I, I appreciate your, your points about our houses cost more, our jobs pay more, right? But we also benefit from that, so I, I don't see that strictly as a negative. Someone who, as you say, bought their house a long time ago and now their house is worth a lot more, they've also benefited from the homestead tax credit for all of those years, may not be paying the full assessment, you know, of, of their taxes. And when and if they do go to sell that, they will have realized presumably a fairly handsome profit. So, I mean, my point, there's a lot of different ways to look at this, I guess. But my, my second question, and then I'll yield. You, you talk about the need for tax relief, and I don't think anyone up here would disagree that we would like to provide tax relief. My, my problem with the property tax rate cut is not everybody's going to see that. If you rent your home, your landlord is not going to pass that along. If you are, if you live in an apartment, you're not going to see that. So, yes, in your proposal, some people will get tax relief. People with very expensive homes will get more than those with lesser homes, but I don't think anybody that doesn't own a home will see that tax relief. And that, that's, that's a concern that I have about wanting to do this as well. So, thank you.
Well, the, the, we, we have certain choices that we can make when it comes to cutting taxes. Different taxes affect different people in different ways. And based on my time in, in public service and my life in this county, I believe the people who are hurting the most right now are the elderly and those on fixed incomes. Because fixed, because household incomes have been very flat, they're on a fixed income, that increase I described earlier and the cost of government has hit the elderly disproportionately. That's why so many of them are leaving. And, and so, when I set about this tax reduction, I, I wanted to find the category of tax that would benefit the elderly the most. That's the property tax. Income tax relief, while welcome, does not really affect those on fixed incomes because they don't get a W-2. They don't get a paycheck. Recordation and transfer tax, the hotel tax, none of those things will affect the elderly. If our goal, and I hope you'll join me in this objective, is to, is to give relief first to the elderly, then it's got to be through the property tax. And I, I do disagree with you about, with all due respect, about, about the effect on renters. If, any, any change in the cost structure for a landlord eventually will ripple through to the tax rate, to the, to the rental rate. No, landlords aren't going to send a memo to his tenants or her tenants saying, hey, I'm, I'm going to pass along this property tax cut to you. But the market will make them do it, because if, if, if landlords don't respond to reductions in cost by passing those savings along, their competitors will, they'll undercut them, and it'll be the competitor whose properties are leased rather than the first party.
Grasso's a landlord. I'd love to say what, see what he says. You're going to be giving your hundred bucks down the line, Grasso?
I'm proud to stay out of this.
Yeah, I know. I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll reserve the right to introduce my bill when we're done with the County Executive.
Fair enough. Mr. Smith, do you have a question?
I, I do. I'm sorry. Mr. County Exec, Mr. Executive, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I guess, I did want to piggyback a little bit off of what Chris was sort of alluding, alluding to was, is it fair, for the last ten, fifteen years, from what I understand, we've been making assessments in how we deliberate the budget based off of one perspective, the tax rate? How we've used that as, as a means to stay consistent with how we produce revenue to fund Anarundel County government? And this budget, this year, it certainly changes that. Now, we're looking at what, what the, the individual is actually paying out. Is that truly a fair representation of where we should be going as a county versus where we've been doing? Because if you look at where we are right now, we're pretty, you know, our county is pretty stable, and that hasn't affected us. When, I mean, I heard the, the notion of folks leaving out. If you go back twenty years, we've increased our population by a hundred thousand, and so it's projected to grow even more. And maybe, maybe the number would have made us increase more, but, but our population is actually on, is, is increasing. And so, I guess, I guess your opinion is, is there, is that fair to change the, the sort of assessment on how we're deliberating the budget, specifically the revenue side?
Well, but both, there are multiple ways of looking at all these metrics, and they're all reasonable and they all have their place. I just think it's important to, to keep our eye on, on the end-user dollars paid, because sometimes just looking at rates can be a little misleading, because it's only half the picture. Just looking at assessed values of property, that's only half the picture, too. What brings it together at the end of the day is the bills people pay. But all these things are worth looking at, and I, I would encourage you to, and I know you do, to look at them all and, and come to your own conclusions, but also talk, talk to people and businesses. And as a, as a longtime businessperson in this community, I, I do know that it's affecting us, and it is affect, that the high level of taxes and fees are affecting new business formation and job creation in, in this county. I really believe that with all my heart, or I wouldn't be working so hard to push this proposal. And could I just say as a personal, just as a personal item, that, that I, I know I've been pushing really hard on this. I've been pushing as hard as I can on this, because I, it really means a lot to me, but I respect the role of the legislature. I spent most of my life in public service as a legislator, and I understand the critical role you play in this process, and I do not expect this budget to end up being my way or the highway. It will be the combined work of all, all of us together, and it will be a product that I'm sure we could all be proud of at the end.
I'm glad to hear that. Actually, the last thing I was going to speak about was, you spoke about totality, and you spoke about looking at the apple from all sides of it. And I, I think the only, not an issue, but one of my concerns or one of the things that I certainly look at is, while this is the, the revenue side of the house, I also look at the expenditure side. And so, I know this isn't the topic, but at, at the expenditure side of this, this delicate dance that we're doing called a budget, are things that are going to, to, to drive our spending of that revenue. And, and what I'm concerned about is, is the potential of increasing debt at the end of this cycle, when there is a, a method to alleviate that debt with the revenue side of it. And so, those are the two things I'm conflicted with, and I'm trying to find a, a happy medium. I don't know if you wanted to sort of shed your lights on the totality of the budget, but certainly, I, I don't look at the budget simply in the fact of just the tax cut. I also look at it in the sense of, well, what are we spending it on? What are we trying to achieve as a county? Build or construct or whatever, that we're, that we're leveraging the, the taxpayers' funding capability to pay for those things, to provide them a quality, quality of life. And so, those are the two things for me that I, that makes it difficult for me to sort of reach a consensus on. What is the magic number for the property tax cut?
Well, there, there has been a lot of discussion of late that, that my proposal to extend the length of our bonds from twenty to thirty years is, is linked to the tax cut in some form or fashion. That is not the case, because I'm not attempting to free up any cash in the operating budget by extending the bonds or to consume any cash in the operating budget by increasing the length of the bonds. What I'm saying we should do is increase the amount of bonds outstanding at those longer terms such that the debt service carried in the operating budget is unchanged. Well, it's, right now, it's about ninety million dollars per year, Mr. Budget Officer, CIO?
Hundred and twenty-one.
Hundred and twenty-one. So, we spend a hundred and twenty-one million dollars now per year. That's what we will spend after the thirty-year bonds, if you guys give us that authority. So, the, the decision about where to set tax rates and, and how to run the operating budget really is not a function of what's going on over the year in the capital budget. If we have thirty-year, if we have, if we stick with twenty-year bonds, I'm still going to be asking just as vigorously for this tax cut. If you, if you kill the tax cut, so be it. I'm going to lobby just as vigorously as I have been for thirty-year bonds. They're independent variables, and I think they're both important.
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pruski?
Thank you for coming down here, Mr. County Executive. You and I had a great conversation, and I was very blunt with you that I don't support the three percent. But, but I do want to follow up with something that I think that nobody asked you, and this is a perfect opportunity for it. What's the plan next year and the following year? Because certainly, you make a cut now, that's nineteen million this year. Is there going to be a further cut? And also, you and I talked about the income tax. I have veterans that live in my community, they're only here for three years. They might, they're not going to see a benefit necessarily for a, a property tax, because they're renting. And again, I'm just wondering in terms of, you know, what would fit, you know, if you'd answer that question, long-term, you know, what is the plan? I forgot to ask about our conversation, but that's, I think it's an important part of what, what we're discussing.
Absolutely. This proposal to cut property taxes is, is what I consider the first installment of a long-range plan to very gradually reduce the overall burden of taxes and fees on the citizens of the county. So, I expect each and every year of my term to implement some significant tax or fee reduction. I don't think any of them will be vast in their magnitude. I don't think our circumstances call for that kind of radical surgery. For example, this tax cut is a hundred dollars per average family. It's not huge, but it will matter if we chip away at it a little bit each and every year. I haven't made any decision about what next year or the year after would look like. I would say most likely, we'll be focusing our attention on the county's fee structure over the course of the summer, and that will probably lead to a net reduction in the overall fee burden taken in the aggregate. And, and the year after, it will be something else. But I, if, if you are supportive of the three percent property tax cut, I, I almost certainly will consider that job done, and we'll be moving on to the next thing.
Thank you. Mr. Peruka?
Chairman, just for what it's worth, a brief comment. Thank you for being here, Mr. County Executive. I agree with you in, in that if you want to help people who are hurting the most, the property tax is the thing to cut first, because it seems to me that the property tax is the most pernicious or the most obnoxious tax for someone on a fixed income, or even for someone not on a fixed income. And the reason I'm saying that or suggesting that is because your out-of-pocket dollars goes up without any money having come in to you, because your assessment has, has perhaps gone up. So, there is no, no revenue that comes, that offsets that. You could talk about the increase in your property value, but that, that goes up and that might go down. It does go down. But assessments seem to go up. So, I agree with you that the place to start is the most obnoxious tax, which I believe is the property tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Peruka. Any additional questions? Mr. County Executive, would you mind just on the record addressing the structural deficit, if you don't mind?
Yes. The budget, as we've proposed it, has a fifteen-million-dollar imbalance between ongoing revenues and ongoing expenses. There have been alternative figures thrown about with which I disagree. You and I have had that conversation. The alternative figure of twenty-five million has been put forward. That includes a shortage of, of credit for PEGO capital of ten million dollars, effectively an assumption that ten million of PEGO is, is permanent and, and enduring part of our ongoing budget, and it's not. There are years where we have no PEGO. I expect during my time in office, there will be other years with no PEGO. So, PEGO is most certainly discretionary in my book, and therefore, the imbalance is fifteen million, the way I, I see it. Now, a couple of comments on that. One is that imbalance is very small relative to the size of our one-point-four-billion-dollar budget. And number two, I view it as a fleeting and temporary consequence of a very significant change in the fiscal policies of this county. And as all of you, I think, know, we have a much quicker ability to change the course of revenue than we do of our expense structure, because our expense, expense structure is so much a function of union contracts, long-term agreements with utility and insurance companies, personnel policies that make payroll sticky in various respects. So, it takes a little more time to bring expenses into line with revenues. I believe it's a one-year, one-year issue that will be resolved in the next budget, I, I, I don't like it, and I have absolutely no intention whatsoever of maintaining or proposing to you chronic budget deficits going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. County Executive, given that, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be more responsible in this year's budget, your first as the county executive, to close the structural deficit, to get on good footing, and then, if in fact you're right, and we all hope that you are, that next year's growth and everything shows that, that now we're better off, that's when you come back with the tax relief. Why, why put it forth now and have to create that structural deficit when you're saying, "Don't worry about it, guys. It won't be there next year"? The way I've operated on the council, I, I would just like to see it reversed. You know, let's get the fiscal house in order, then let's talk about tax relief, instead of doing it all at once. Just, just a comment.
Councilman, that's a perfectly legitimate way to attack the problem, but I, I have two reasons why I have done it this way. Number one, it is the commitment that I made to the voters of this county and, and the policy that they endorsed. I was very specific on the road that it was 3% in the first year, in the first budget. And second, I've been an observer of government for a long time. Government's appetite for cash is, is voracious. It is very hard to cut taxes. And the, it's, it's very hard, excuse me, it's very, very hard to cut spending. Spending is, is, is very resistant to management in government, much more so than in business. And I believe the experience in other levels of government over the decades has demonstrated clearly to my satisfaction that the best way to moderate the size and span of government is to reduce the revenue, is to choke it of revenue. If you reduce the revenue, expenses have to come in line, whether you like it or not. So I look at it as a little bit of tough medicine.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the county executives? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Trumbauer, you'd like to introduce your bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My bill is Bill Number 4115. It simply sets the property tax rate at a level consistent with the fiscal policy of the county for the last eight-plus years. And in addition to that, it actually is a rate decrease from last year, and we had the discussion about rate versus real dollars. But the fact is, because assessments are going up, it would actually be a decreased rate from what we did last year. I feel like this is the more responsible thing to do, fiscal responsibility thing to do, and you can find the actual numbers and impacts in the auditors. Blue letter, but I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Go ahead, no, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Grasso.
Not, not on Mr. Trumbauer, on Mr. Hammond over here. What's, what always kind of gets me going in this whole deal, we were talking about, what does it cost to maintain the roads? It's like $25 million, I thought we were talking about?
Well, we historically, in the last eight or so years, have been spending around $17 million for road reconstruction, road maintenance. And this year, we were proposing to up it to 25, and I think Mr. Phipps would say, an ongoing amount would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of 30, 32 million.
Okay, so if my memory serves me right, we were somewhere, the highway user revenue was somewhere around 30 million before the economy went into the tank?
At its peak, yeah.
Okay. So it was $30 million for the state kicking in. How much would you say we were putting in for the, the county portion of that?
Um, well, you know.
What I'm looking at is, I'm trying to get a total number over here, because I'm, I'm saying to myself, okay, well, if the state is kicking in $30 million, and the county says, "Well, we got all this money coming in from the state, we only need to put $2 million in". Now, if the state went from 30 million down to 3.1 or 3.2, somewhere around there?
Right.
Right? There's $27 million that is now missing off the revenue. So what have we done in the county-wise to make that up? And, and that's what I'm trying to, trying to put together. Tax cut, I'm, I'm the first one to say, "I'm all about cutting taxes." But the problem I'm having a hard time struggling here with is that it is, it's who you talk to. You go talk to Mrs. Jones, who goes out and plays bingo every night, okay, and she's on a fixed income, she says, "That $100 tax cut is a great deal. I'll take it." Okay? Because she doesn't have to pay that $2,500 tax cut. She's going to pay $2,400. But if you talk to Mr. Smith, okay, no, no points of tension, okay? Who goes to work in a pickup truck every morning with a cup of coffee, and he hits this pothole and throws a cup of coffee into the ceiling of his truck, he's going to say, "I want the damn road fixed". So the, the question is, is, "I'm having a hard time wanting to give back money if we, if we know, or at least you tell me, that the roads are not where they should be." And, and to me, I just, you know, it's, I agree with the county executive. We want to set a precedence, but not cut the nose off in spite of the face. That's, that's my issue. So if we had $30 million coming in from the state, how much would you say did the county contribute to that 30 million to maintain the roads?
Uh...
Now, knowing going back five, six years at least.
Yeah, no, well, you've got to go back further than that, and my memory is, is not...
Best guess. Five million?
Oh, at least, at least.
10 million?
I mean, we've had to make up for this, we've had to make up for this decrease in state funding by taking some of the revenue that comes in and the normal growth every year to, to backstop what the state has not given us now.
All right. So, so we had $30 million coming in from the state, and we say, best guess, back then, we were kicking in 10 million, that's $40 million, right? And now we're, that's what we had going into our roads. And how much do we got going into the road now?
Right now, as I said, historically, in the, in this, in the current year's budget and, and the recent past, it's been around 16, 17 million of road maintenance money.
Okay. So John Grasso math says that we are short $24 million right there. To me, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. If that's what we were doing just to, to make where we were going, and if we want to give $18 million back, or $19 million, whatever it is, we're still $5 million short to where we should be.
And, you know, this gets to the, the 30-year bond issue, in that, you know, we have, it's all part of the infrastructure, and we have infrastructure backlogs. We've talked about that every year, vis-à-vis the schools, the county facilities.
But even you go with that 30-year bond, and, and it's taken us from, and I'm trying to get most of my numbers that I can remember halfway here, that, that's given us $125 million, I'm thinking, was the capital with this 30-year bond. Teresa, help me out over here, it's going to take us to 140 million? If we were to go to 30-year bond, what was it, 125?
Well, we were at 120. The proposed budget says 145.
Okay, so 25 million.
But, but that assumes $10 million of recurring PEGO that Mr. Schu just said he wasn't counting on. So if you don't have $10 million of recurring PEGO in the capital budget, you now have to borrow 155 million.
Okay. I'm seeing, just looking at, I'm just seeing just right here and just... Huh? What's that? Drop the mic? Oh, that's why I got to do a Hammond special. I'm just seeing most of that money being ate up just to make the roads to where they used to be way back before the economy went bad. There's 24 million right there. I, I don't understand the math. That's the part I'm having a hard time with.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Hammond, Teresa, Ms. Sutherland just mentioned something. I mean, the county executive said that he wasn't, there was a potential for him not to have any PEGO in the budget, but then they're actually, she was just saying that actually is baked, $10 million baked into future capital improvement programs. Is that, is that correct?
We have in our proposed capital program and a $10 million amount for PEGO on an annual basis. It's discretionary in that it doesn't have, it doesn't impact the operating budget. When you talk structural deficit, you're talking, that's an operating budget concept. And as we learned during the recession, we, as the county executive said, not only did we not have any PEGO, we had negative PEGO during those years.
So we would potentially, if there wasn't PEGO to put in there, what you're saying is we'd have to cut something that was in the, in the program?
We, we might not have to cut something, we wish, which just would not do some short-term projects that typically require cash rather than bonds. But the size of the capital budget could, could still continue to be supported by bonds.
But the way, the way the budget's structured, though, and the way you're showing the next six years out is $10 million.
It shows a $10 million item, but again, we're talking, you know, when you talk about the structural deficit, it's an operating budget concept, and you have ability to, to have some flexibility with that.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I'll pass, because I know there's some folks that wanted to testify, so I'll reserve my comments.
I want to say one thing to him.
Mr. Grasso?
And I don't want to beat up on the county executive, so that's not my intention. I think he's doing a, a great job. The, the thing that I know his passion is for is making sure of the senior citizens. I got that loud and clear, and I know that's a big thing with him, and applaud him for that. But maybe the, maybe the attitude that I would be a little bit softer is that they're going to do this, and I know that that money is going directly to the senior citizens who are on a fixed income, then I can be a little softer on this property tax cut, because I don't believe it's going to be as large. Because myself is going to work every day, and I'm guessing most people go to work every day, that $100 spread over a year's time is, I don't know, seven bucks, somewhere around there, eight bucks, and you might say it's a big deal. But banks are not going to change the escrow analysis over $8. So the person that's getting that property tax cut of that $100 is not going to see anything. Their mortgage payment is still going to be 1,000, 1,500, whatever their mortgage payment, they're not going to see anything. So the really, the really only ones that are going to benefit from this is the senior citizens that I can see. He's, Steve has got some great, great ideas of what he's saying to move the economy and all that stuff. I, I understand all that, but I don't know, I think it would be more advantageous to move it towards the senior citizens, and, and if that's truly who we're trying to help, then let it be them. And I'm not saying everybody can't use the help, but $100 to a working person is $7 a month. You know, I don't want to sound like I'm almighty over here, and somebody said, "Well, $7, there's a big difference between me getting a large cheese pizza this month and not getting a pizza." You know, I get that. But I just, I, just in business, they're not going to change their escrow. It's going to be the same. And the only ones that's going to really affect, the only ones that's going to really help is the senior citizens. So maybe detail the bill or something towards the senior citizens. Maybe that might be the way to run.
I'm conflicted, Mr. Grasso. I'm a senior citizen.
Yeah, but you're not on a fixed income, though, right?
Isn't there...
You want a large cheese pizza?
Isn't there provisions in the code right now, Mr. Hammond? Isn't there provisions in the code right now for senior citizens with regards to property tax?
It's not so much geared towards senior citizens. It's geared, it's a means test, it's based upon the amount of income, and it compares the amount of income you have to the overall property, overall property taxes you have to pay.
I would disagree with that, Mr. Hammond.
I'm talking about the homestead credit.
Right, but there's a deferral for elderly or disabled homeowners.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about the homeowner's, the homeowner's tax credit program.
Yes, there's a 50-year deferral on county real property taxes to a homeowner who has lived there at least five years and meets one of the following three conditions: is 62, is disabled, or meets, eh, I'm sorry, have to live there five years, they're 62 or disabled, and they meet income eligibility requirements. So if you are a senior citizen living on a limited income, there is already a deferral program for you. And...
And that's what I was saying, that the homeowner's program...
And I think that was actually, the age criteria was actually lowered this year. Maybe one of our friends from across the street can elaborate on that. But I believe it was...
Was it 65?
It was lowered to 60, I believe, if you met the other criteria. Yeah, and, and homeowners are eligible if their combined gross income does not exceed $50,000 a year. So anyone up to $50,000 a year is already eligible for a deferral of their property taxes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Grasso? So, so in other words, what you, what we're saying here is their taxes, they're on, they're hitting all those qualifications, their taxes don't go up every year.
They can opt, they could opt into a plan.
They could opt, they could have planned.
They could defer until they sell the property, if they sell the...
Yes, and, and also, a property owner who remains in their home, and is their principal residence, and they're getting the homestead credit, their taxes aren't going up 4% a year. They're going up 2% a year.
So what happens when they, they sell?
Well, tell me what the rate of inflation is.
I'm using the two, I'm using the last 10 years, or the last 25 years, it's two and a half.
The assessment's going up 2%, but the rate of inflation, which drives the tax cap, could go up 4%.
But it's, for over the last 25 years, the average annual increase under the tax cap is 2.5%. And over the last 10 years, it's 2%. So I think it's pretty hard to argue that someone who's been in their home has seen a 4% increase.
So they go, they go up to 50 years and say they sell their property, that they, do they have to pay the county its money back then?
Yes.
Or it's been deferred?
Yes, it's deferred. It's not forgiven.
Well, that sounds like a heck of a system we got there. Didn't we, I thought we passed that as a council. Did we pass that last, last time?
There was an amendment, it says Bill 4812. So there was some amendment 2012.
That's what I thought, I remember that. Okay, good for the seniors. Okay.
I, I don't remember what you did, but yeah, you did something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Any additional questions or comments for Mr. Trumbauer on his bill? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Bills 40, 15, and 41, 15. The, we have folks who are signed up to speak, but I don't believe many of them will object to having the, the highest ranking elected official in the room speak first, State Senator Ed Riley.
I got to tell you, I miss you guys. This is so much fun. I'm sitting back there making notes. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the courtesy. And to the people in the room, thank you for allowing me to go ahead of maybe where I should be. Mr. Vice Chair, members of the council, good evening. I do have a couple of just very brief questions before I get into my prepared text about some of the discussion you just had. And about the assessments, it's very interesting. We may have a low rate, but remember, we have more waterfront property than any other county in the state. And people are willing to pay a lot of money, which drives assessments for that privilege. I live in Crofton, Maryland. I have a Leavitt house on a slab that's built about 1962. The same house in Bowie is significantly less valued in their assessment because of our school systems. And when you take Broadneck, Severna Park, the Annapolis IB, the schools that we present to the public raise the value of the houses, and therefore, the assessments. The other interesting thing about the, the tax cap, and I'll get to that in just a few minutes. We talk about who's going to help. We all know that people who own rental properties are not subject to the homestead credit, that they're paying the full freight. And therefore, if there is a tax reduction in the property tax, they're disproportionately benefited compared to a lower-value homeowner occupied getting that homestead credit. And on a commercial lease, commercial business properties, every year, I get a bill from my landlord, which passes on triple-net, maintenance, taxes, and insurance. That's a direct expense to my small business. If this tax credit moves forward, thousands of small businesses in Antioch County will benefit. The landlord's not going to keep it, because he's not involved in that. It's an automatic pass-through to the small businesses that have a triple-net lease. So, Mr. Chairman, also, I ask your tolerance, I'd like to address two issues, the, the 3% property tax reduction and the 30-year bonds at the same time, with your permission. Thank you very much. So I'm going to wear different hats today. My first hat is as a small business owner. For those of you who don't know, I'm a insurance professional. I hold a license from the state of Maryland. I've done this for 40 years, advising people on how to spend their insurance money, how to protect themselves against risk, and I'm a certified financial planner. I've also owned mortgages, I've had mortgages for my 40 years of marriage. I understand the length of mortgages and what it means to us. When my wife and I sat down and decided to buy our first two-bedroom townhouse, we had to make the decision, do we go with a 15-year mortgage, a 20-year mortgage, or 30-year mortgage? And we decided on a 30-year mortgage, because we knew we could use the value to purchase an appropriate location. This is the same decision you're going to have to make. This county has traditionally been very conservative. The auditor, the budget officer, the county executives, traditionally extremely conservative, The auditor, the budget officer, the county executives, traditionally extremely conservative, especially in their revenue estimates and their expense estimation. But this is a unique time, because we have the lowest interest rate in my lifetime. I'm 65 years old. I have never seen an interest rate like this. And if, in fact, the county executive, with your permission, goes to 30-year bonds, it doesn't mean every year after this, it's going to be a 30-year amortization. It depends on the interest rate. It depends on the cost of building increases. These are the things that you have to evaluate and make decisions about. The second hat I'm wearing today and bringing before you is the seven years I sat in your chairs, as two years as a chairman, two years as a vice chairman, and a couple of years as just a regular councilman. When I look at a budget, I realize that it's an executive budget process. And your job is to affirm the presentation, or, as we have always seemed to do in my seven years on the council, nibble at the edges. As we looked at seven years, and the county auditor, my good friend who is just very smart, will tell you that at the end of seven budgets, we moved around about 1%. We killed a project one time to put a car wash on Central Avenue, Central Parking Depot. Our trucks looked fine, our county hasn't been hurt. It was a decision that we made that it wasn't the appropriate capital project. I looked at the proposal presented to you, and okay, tennis courts, keep the bike bridge, I'm a biker, libraries. You guys have to make that evaluation as best you can on what are the core functions of government. That's what your discussion should really focus on. What are we supposed to do? Protect and defend, water and sewer, schools, public health? And we look outside of that if we have extra dollars. The three things that I think I would encourage you to continue deliberation is that whatever you decide that it's balanced, I believe the county executive put projects in the budget that positively affected every district. He didn't pick a favorite child. He didn't pick the favorite region. Number two, is it reasonable? Does it make sense as a part of our core function of government? Is it a reasonable project, a reasonable expenditure? And the last thing, and the one that the county executive mentioned, was sustainable. Can we carry the expense on for a long period of time? You have the duty to have a prudent decision. Ask yourselves, are these expenses part of the core function of government? The third hat I wear today is that of a state senator. And I have to tell you, I proudly voted against six state budgets, because the leadership, the executive leadership budget that was presented to us continued constantly to have huge structural deficits without addressing them in any way, shape, or form. We have a new governor. He made a commitment on the stump that he's going to be more fiscally conservative. And guess what? He brought in the budget with the smallest amount of actual dollar increase in 40 years. When that budget came to the Maryland State Senate, we voted for it, with a structural deficit that was reduced almost 80%. We voted for a budget with a 20% structural deficit on the state level because we knew the next year it would be gone. With good management and good budgeting, our good governor is going to bring this state back into balance. I have the same great faith about our county executive. The question is, do you have that type of faith? I don't know. You'll have to make that decision yourself. I can tell you, when the Democrats got done with our state budget in the House of Delegates and brought it back to the Senate, I voted against it, because they moved that deficit another 50%. They just chopped at the governor's good work, and I voted against it because it was out of balance so much, it would take two, three, four years for the governor to bring it back into balance. And the other thing about structural imbalance, whether it's 15 million or 25 million, you let the accountants argue that out, means that we need to adjust long-term expenditures like labor contracts, government contracts for purchasing of goods and services. And those things don't change overnight. I felt comfortable voting for the Hogan budget with a structural deficit, because I knew he was moving in the right direction. As I evaluate the budget in front of you, I would say the same thing.
Senator, we have a few other folks.
I know, and I'm wrapping it up. The fourth hat I'm bringing to you is as a politician. Practical hardcore grassroots question. 61% of the voters sent this man with his agenda to the fourth floor. And the question is, these same people brought you back, hoping, I believe, that you would support the programs that he is promoting. I would just encourage you to support both the 3% reduction in revenue, property tax revenue, and the 30-year amortization. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your patience.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question for the senator, if I may?
As long as he has a short answer.
I think, I think it's a yes or no question. Thank you for your comment about the election. I just, I couldn't help but wonder if you support the Obamacare, American Care Act?
Very good question.
In as much as the president won a big electoral victory.
How much, 4%?
Well, the Electoral College, I think, was more than that.
Tell me, popular vote, how many, 4%? 3.5%? He calls it a landslide, and I disagree.
Well, everybody's entitled to their own opinion.
61 to 39. That's all I have to say. Anything else?
Thank you, Senator.
He didn't answer my question, but I like him anyway, so I'll let him go.
The practical answer is, I fight Obamacare every chance I have, but the citizens of the United States have seemed to embrace it, but the real intricate grassroots problems are just starting to come to the surface. So I have a sense that public opinion will change quickly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
We do have other individuals sign up to speak. Delegate McConkey, former Councilman Dick Ladd, Minority Leader Nick Kipke, James Appel, and Danielle Coyle. You all come forward this time. I'm assuming, yeah, he's not on the list though, yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Delegate Tony McConkey to testify in support of the county executive's 3% property tax cut. I think the county and the state have suffered greatly from a taxpayer perception that we are overtaxed. And I would give you three examples. The poll that was commissioned right before the last election that showed a majority of the state thinking about or wishing to move out of the state. Also, the fact that we've had so many businesses and individuals move from the state. If there's a wonderful website, I encourage all of you to look at it, it's HowMoneyWalks.com. And it shows that over the last 20 years, we've lost $10 billion in income wealth from our state. And it shows you, based on census data, where those people have moved, what states they've gone to, what states we've had people move here from, and $10 billion we've lost. The third thing I would point to is the historic election that was mentioned before. You know, for that reason, I think that this issue is much greater than simply a math problem, simply, you know, $100. I think that this sets a tone for the next four years. I think this sets a marketing perception. This changes, you know, the direction that we're headed. And I think that if we can change that, if we can, if we can sell the citizens of Anarundale County, or even, you know, everyone, the citizens of the state and citizens of the country, that Anarundale County is a great place to be, a great place to start your business, a great place to come to, I think that the benefits long-term would be dramatically more than the short revenue loss now. And I, you know, answering Councilman Trumpauer's question about why, why do this first, I think doing this first changes the tone. I think doing this first changes the perception, and I think that's why it should be done first, and that's why I support it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Delegate. Delegate Kipke?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the council. It's great to be with you tonight. I've thoroughly enjoyed my experience here. It's been entertaining. Thank you very much. We get to see some of you on a regular basis. I encourage all of you to come, and we'll make sure you go last. I'm just kidding. Honestly, though, you know, last year, I spent a lot of time going door-to-door and face-to-face with Anarundale County residents. And I have to tell you, I saw a wide array of folks. You might be surprised, I don't just knock on Republican doors, I knock on a lot of Democratic doors around this county. And I was pleasantly surprised to see those folks saying to me, we're fed up with the taxes in this state and then with this county. And we've heard people talk sort of subjectively, or maybe even casually about that during elections. But the facts bear it out, Delegate McConkey mentioned that website, How Money Walks. It comes from pure IRS data that shows how the citizens of Maryland, and you can actually click on Anarundale County, exit to tax-friendlier environments. So citizens from your district and my district have for-sale signs all over our neighborhoods because they can't afford to live here. And I'd hate morally to allow our county to be a place where only the wealthy can survive. And I've got a lot of low-income, middle-class folks, not just the elderly, who are struggling to make ends meet. And I've got to tell you, I believe taking $100 more a year, and we have to, is immoral. And I also believe that we need to do the things the government needs to do, and you have a tough job in front of you. But anything that can be done to provide relief to the elderly, those little families just starting out buying their first home, or other folks that are trying to survive like small businessmen and women in our county, it's our moral obligation to do it. I'll tell you, too, that during this last session, our governor introduced some meaningful tax relief. And I'm proud to tell you that Democrats and Republicans came together and embraced some of his tax and fee relief, because that's what Marylanders want. That's what the citizens of Anarundale County want. And I encourage you to find a way to make it happen, and make it happen now. The fact of the matter is, if it doesn't work, it rests on the county executive's shoulders. But he needs four years to make it happen, to provide the relief for this county, for the citizens, and I believe it's the right thing to do morally. I think in the end, as other people have mentioned, it will spur economic development in our county. I think it will also help those senior citizens that are leaving, those middle-class folks who can't afford to buy a $300,000 house in our county. I think it'll help them strengthen the overall makeup of what we have here in this beautiful land that we call Anarundale. And finally, I'll just mention two folks. I spoke with a young couple down Lake Shore Drive in Pasadena who bought a little, actually they're renting a little home there. And when I knocked on their door, they said, you know, we're moving because we can't afford to buy a home. And my family always said, don't rent, sorry, Councilman, buy, because that's the right thing to do for my financial security. But I can't afford to buy here in Anarundale County the place where my wife and I have lived our entire lives. We have our first child, and I want to have a secure life for them. So where are they going? To a place with a lower quality, a lower, equal quality of life and a lower cost of living. So we need to make sure that we're a county that can allow all people, not just the wealthy, survive. And unfortunately, this government, your government, my government, has been taking way too much out of people's pockets, despite the fact that their income is not growing. And that's the bottom line, in my, in my opinion. So respectfully, I just say, actually, I implore you, do what we did in the General Assembly. Embrace some tax relief. We passed it in a bipartisan way. It's, it's, it's meaningful, yet it's modest, and it's going to help a lot of retirees around this state. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. I do have a question for you. The senator weighed in on the bond issue, and I'd like to get your opinion on that. As you know, the state of Maryland issues 15-year bonds for their capital projects, and the county executive's suggesting that we move from 20 to 30.
Well, I think that you're in the position to put certain restraints around his proposal. I wouldn't want to see the Anarundale County Council do like Governor O'Malley has done for the last eight years and borrow money to do things that they used in that year. Honestly, I believe that was part of the reason that we're on the financial footing that we are as a state. We have to pay $500 million a year next year for Pago service, and half of that, or, excuse me, for debt service, and half of that is for stuff that's gone. There's no capital investment left behind. There's no sewage treatment plant that's been built. There's no school that's been built. It was quick and easy, and that's why it was done. I believe that the county executive has a good plan that I'm sure you can improve. Put certain restrictions around it to encourage the fact that whatever the project is, be something that is going to be around for the next generation to utilize as well as our own.
So you support the 30-year bonds, is what you're saying?
Well, I have to tell you that I haven't read the proposal, because I'm here to support tax relief. As you would agree, it's, I believe the county executive said, they're two different issues. I know that you're trying to make it into the same issue by the line of your questioning, but I don't believe that it's the same issue. However, I'm happy to get back to you, and if I'm wrong, I'll stand corrected. But I do believe that there's a great opportunity before us for the purpose of building capital investments, that we have a backlog that's long, and I know you're very familiar with. This isn't something that's unique to Anarundale County. Many of the jurisdictions around the state have been asking for authority to extend their bond capabilities to 30 years, including rural counties throughout the state.
Yeah, if you don't mind getting back to us, that'd be great.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
No problem. Let's see, former Councilman Ladd.
Dick Ladd, 1537 Shipsey Road. I told myself I wouldn't want to come back and try to talk. I picked up The Wall Street Journal this weekend, and I was reading about Sonoma County, California. And it was roads, and they were talking about how they had to cut their spending to make their budget balance, and they deferred roads to the point that they're no longer repairable. They've got to go to major rebuilds. And that puts my interest clearly on the side of the capital budget. I listened to all the discussion, I read all the notes that the auditor has put out, and all this stuff comes together. And I really think we've got to do something about the capital budget. That's not what these two amendments are about, but you all know that it has to do with revenue. And so I, when I tried to think about what, listen for what I wanted to hear in the discussion was, what about timing of this budget, of the, what do you call it, the tax decrease, the tax rebate, the timing of it, and whether or not it would not be better structurally to do it on the income side? And we did that four years ago, and we know how it works, and you can, you can more carefully tailor the amount of the tax relief that you're going to provide with what you need to do on the capital side. So I'm interested in that interface between the two, and I would not like to see aspects of the capital budget thrown out strictly for the, for the sake of a tax cut that was specifically prescribed. Essentially, when the county executive just said that he's going to, this is going to be a four-year project that has got, or he's on to reduce the taxing. I think what he's doing is on the right path. Don't misunderstand me. But it is that balance that I, you all are wrestling, and I understand that, and I watched the discussion and read the interviews you've done. And I wish you well in that regard, and I'm just saying, timing is one of the ways we can get out of this thing, and also going to the income tax for one year or something like that. There were some other variables in here, and I'd hope not to see the capital budget thrown out, that baby gets thrown out with a bathwater.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. Appreciate it. Mr. Appel?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. James Appel, 28 South River Road, Edgewater. So a new constituent of District 7, sorry. I'm here to speak in favor of the tax cut, but I would also like to speak in favor of the 30-year bonds as well. Bit cliche, but you need to spend money to make money. This is a prime opportunity to start investing in our county. I think the 3% tax cut will benefit a wide variety of citizens, myself included, as a renter. I feel like, as the county executive mentioned, that it will trickle down. As the senator mentioned, that small businesses will feel that effect. And that will, again, end up helping me as a, as a citizen of the county. I would like to see the bonds extended to 30 years. I think there's an opportunity to invest in the county, long-term investments, as the minority leader mentioned, let's pick projects that are going to outlive, or at least last as long as the bonds will be in effect. So I feel like that a combination of both the tax relief, as well as the extension of the bonds, will increase the quality of life for the citizens of Anarundale County. That, in turn, will then bring more businesses to the county, it will prevent current citizens from leaving the county, and while the structural deficit may be in place for the first year, it will be made up for, within the next few years, fairly easily. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Danielle Coyle?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I live in Crofton, 1128 Carron Cross Drive. Last year, my father paid $4,700 in property taxes. We almost couldn't afford to pay it. That potentially puts a family of five in a situation where we could have lost our home of 20 years. My home is a symbol of everything my father has worked for in his 50-year career. I could have lost the first place I ever felt safe. I know a family in Shadyside who are dangerously close to losing their home. Living on a fixed income consisting of around $600 a month from social security checks, they struggle to keep their lights on and their pantries full. How can they be expected to pay thousands of dollars a year to the county? Is it fair that they could lose a home that has been passed down to generations? Property tax revenue makes up 43% of the county's $1.3 million budget. That adds up to $622 million this year alone. Where is this money going? It's obvious that it's not going to loyal residents in need. No one should have to risk losing their home because they can't afford to pay a property tax. No one should have to choose between paying a tax and feeding their family. If the property tax... If the property tax is not reduced, the county's economy could be negatively affected. Residents will move where it's less expensive to live. Money they could have spent here will go to another state. Do you want a neighboring state reaping the benefits from someone who could have stayed in Anarundale County? If the county council does not approve of our county executive's 3 percent property tax cut, your constituents will have two choices: relocate, or vote someone else in who will listen to their needs. If you do not support Steve Schu's 3 percent property tax cut, please tell us how you plan to help those you are supposed to represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect time. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Delegate Malone, I see you out there. Apologize, I was trying to get to the.
I understand. I had a prior commitment up the, with the wonderful action group, it's tied to Qantas of citizens that are getting the joy of working in an entity like yours and passing things, but that prevented me from getting here early to sign up.
No worries.
But I'll try to be brief as the hour is late. I am Michael Malone. I live at 2011 Aldridge Lane, Gambrels, Maryland, and I thank you all for giving me this time to speak. Many of you know, in my other job, other than being a delegate, I practice family law. And you see a lot of vignettes and anecdotal evidence of what families experience, because when they get to me, the family's in difficulty. I saw 10 years ago the bubble coming. I wish I'd had the wherewithal to capitalize on that bubble coming, but I'd see people come in, and they were refinancing, and they were, you know, getting money and spending more and more money on a home, and just going and going and going. The biggest difficulty that I see in the families now is their home. It's like, it's a ball and chain around their leg. So I support the property tax, because when I see someone come in, fortunately, most people, it's not jobs, they're still finding income, but their biggest problem is they have a home which they cannot afford, and part of it is the property tax. Certainly, it's also the mortgage. That's all part of the equation. It does affect on what they qualify for. And it gets them in a couple different ways. It gets them, one, it's, of course, it's the burden and the number that they have to lay out every month, but also gets them because sometimes they can't qualify to refi, it puts themselves in this situation where they can benefit from these record interest, you know, interest rates that we have. So I'm reporting to you, the best way you can help people is to provide relief on the home. As you know, it's a regressive tax. It hits everyone, and it hits the renters, because the renters, you know, that cost is being passed on. Also, another anecdotal piece of testimony I'd like to present is, I recently had a conversation with my CPA, very level-headed guy, and he says, "Maryland's got to stop everyone leaving." And it sort of leads to the same thing. You get to older individuals, whether, you know, they're on a fixed income or they have plenty of funds, they're looking to maximize their dollars, and the tax rate is what's affecting people leaving. And many of these, you know, individuals are our best resources, because they don't overly tax the system. They don't have two, three, or four children, like me, in the public school system, not right now, not unless you count college. But, you know, they're bringing in good funds for our county and our state, and we're losing that because of the tax. And that really leads me to my last point. The voters spoke last November. They wanted tax relief. And I asked for you to listen to the voters, both in their, you know, selection of Governor Hogan and their selection of County Executive Schu, and provide that tax relief. So I ask you to provide that tax relief by way of a less, a smaller property tax burden on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good evening, and thank you.
No problem. Good evening, Ms. Cochran.
Does someone else who's signed up?
There's no one else signed up at this point. We're just at whoever wants to.
Okay.
Do you want to call everybody?
Yeah. Is anyone else wishing to speak on this? You can come down and have seats at the table here. Ms. Cochran, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. I'm Susan Cochran. I live at 332 Hamlet Circle in Edgewater, Maryland. And I'm just speaking from another perspective. I didn't come with a budget analysis, but I'm speaking as a senior citizen, and we've talked a lot about these senior citizens. I know we're better off than many, but we are, we have been, I've been retired for a long time. My husband's been retired for a long time, and we take advantage of the homestead credit, and we get by, let's say it that way. But we have children, and we have grandchildren who live here, and we want the services that Anarundale provides. And we see people who want to move to Howard County, they want to move to Montgomery County, because they were mentioned as very high-tax places, but they're also wonderful places to live and do business, and there's great services there. We have a wonderful Department of the Aging. They've been cutting, at the Department of the Aging, they've been cutting at the Senior Center, they've been cutting staff and so forth. It's a wonderful service for all of us. I think that, I also wanted to mention that lowering this tax base is going to affect us for years to come, because once you lower the base, then you have that problem of not being able to escalate from year to year. So I think that, that we, I hope, you know, you'll put your best wisdom caps on and come up with some solution that continues the great county we have. We don't want to be a second-class county here, and enables us to also, you know, keep on with our level of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Anthony, 635 Ross Drive, Pasadena, Maryland. I was trained as a Series 7 licensed stockbroker many years ago, 1984. And I look at the amount of debt that we're taking on to do this, and it just is appalling. I look at Ms. Sutherland's graph sheet, supplied you all with the notes on the lost revenue potential. I look at, you know, the $100 property tax cut versus the $200 a year roughly we're going to be adding in debt. I look at our debt service going from $123 million to $159 billion. That's the cost of the debt service. I look at the debt going from $1,668 to $1,368, and I say, "Hm, Mr. Schu's five pillars of his program are built on a quicksand of debt." You know, I think you said it very well, Mr. Grasso, when you talked about seven bucks a month. I mean, give me a break. Our roads aren't fixed. We've got $2.1 billion in a backlog of projects in this county. And you've got a structural deficit. Ms. Sutherland's numbers, I think, pushed it close to $27 million. Mr. Schu's numbers, when he presented them, I was here, were $15.7 million per year. So we're going to do this all on debt, you know, for our kids, for our grandkids. I mean, it just, to me, it's appalling. It really is. You know, you don't want to keep the residual funds in place for the rainy day fund. He just vetoed that. That affects your bond rating. Every time the bond rating changes, it's a couple, $2, $3 million a year. Ms. Sutherland can probably answer that. I think that's about right. Just every year, it's $2 to $3 million. Over the life of a school, it's $100 million. That's your new high school, or close to a new high school. These are my concerns. I don't know what yours are.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson? You might have the last word. Oh, Mr. Snowden, all right, you got the last word.
Julie Thompson, P.O., Box 6630, Fort Worth, Maryland. I do oppose extending, you know, to 30 years, and I do oppose the, you know, the reduction in taxes. You know, I really appreciate that you care about senior citizens, but I'm afraid from Mr. Schu, those words have been really hollow, because I have been pleading for so long, "Just please give my neighbors the tickets. Prosecute them for the terrible crimes every single day." You know, $7,500 a day if you just prosecute three of them. You know, you can get to $7 million, $10 million pretty quickly. You know?
Ms. Johnson, the hearings about the tax bills.
Exactly. You can get revenue, you know, you don't need to borrow money if you have revenue coming in. You know, we have, you know, we have, you know, they're talking about the employer, you know, people leaving. Well, what are we doing? We're gluttoning the market with illegal, you know, with illegal alien, you know, employees. The employers are not paying their full share of taxes. You know, you could generate a lot of revenue from income in the event those employers were reporting all of the income, you know, all of the salaries that they're paying. There are a lot of ways to generate more revenue merely by enforcing the laws. And earlier tonight, Ms. Tate said something that was really, you know, startling and refreshing to me. She said, "The county attorney and the county police chief are responsible for living up to their oath." And that would mean they advise the county executive to comply with the law.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Snowden, I think you have the last word, unless somebody else jumps up.
I don't see nobody. Yes, Miller Snowden, burning. You know, you've heard a lot of facts and figures about this and that, and what the county's going to fall apart, and what had skies fall, and all that stuff, but, you know, I've been around, you know, I ran for office, too, and talked to a lot of people. And a lot of people are upset with the taxes that go on within this state, within this county, too. And when that rain tax came down, it really upset a lot of people. I'm sorry, John, but it did. It upset a lot of people. And the people, you know, they just became afraid of what all, what's the county council going to do to us next? What else are they going to increase? What else they going to create with some kind of new tax? And that's the general attitude out there that you folks are generating. So, like I say, I'm just giving it to you in simple terms. Don't be afraid to do this, because you'll just make the people more afraid of you. And that's basically all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional testimony? Seeing none. This time, the public hearing on Bills 40 and 4115 are now closed. These bills, we voted on June 15, 2015. Oh, thank you. In addition, Bills 3015 through 3915 will be up for vote on June 15 as well. Is there any other business to be brought for the county council?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. County councils adjourn. Council meet at 9:00 a.m. on Friday, June 5, 2015, for the auditor's comments on the budget, followed by the administration rebuttal at 1:00.